How are you doing? Aren't you sitting over here? Why don't you sit over here?
Yeah.
I want to sit next to you now.
Yeah.
I want to sit by you.
Yeah.
The ones by the way.
Yeah.
Mike, we have invited today.
But he knows.
Our job is not to break it down.
It's just that we need to be ready.
But uh, they do have that.
Exactly.
We want to see them.
I'm so much.
Well, like.
No.
They're still not.
Yes.
They are.
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 That's the one.
Uh.
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah.
Did they think about what they did?
Proven to other than that.
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
I was.
I'm going to.
Just for the interest of the trip.
I'm going to.
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 Thank you.
I'm going to give my gift right now.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
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 Well, thank you.
That's me.
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes.
Hold on.
I like.
I like.
She's so.
I think so.
Yeah.
That's right.
I know that's because you're old.
You're.
I'm like, yes.
You're.
I'm like, yes.
Uh.
Okay.
We have.
I'm.
You know.
Well, we come.
It's.
Five.
No.
One sixty-five.
Sixty.
Sixty-five.
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 Well, sure.
Do you want to turn it up? Do you want to turn it up more? Like seriously? If I have it, if I have it in the middle there.
What is it?
No way. Do you want to turn it up?
That's the time I would be.
The range is like.
Same.
The range is up to like seven.
Four.
Do you want to turn it up?
I have one.
Yeah.
More.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
I don't know.
Yeah.
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 I got no winner, but thanks.
Yeah.
Next time I'm in the park, it's like.
Yeah.
What?
You see the minutes in the bar?
Please.
And two minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's.
Yeah.
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 We said.
How can you have your.
Assistant.
Okay.
Two forty-five hours.
Yeah.
Five little hours.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
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 You really have one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One more.
Yeah.
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 That's where.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm really love.
I'm really.
John's my daughter.
Yeah.
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 And I talk right.
Yeah.
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 That's true.
Exactly.
What I.
Yeah.
Please.
I can hope.
Yeah.
I'm going to walk out of this.
I'm on the.
Face.
Yeah.
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 Sure.
Very disappointed how last week.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah.
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 So.
Yeah.
More.
Yeah.
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 Is your brother right?
Yeah.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
You're smart.
Who was your place?
Yeah.
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 Or the fracture.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chris.
No.
Oh, dear.
I'm surprised he didn't call me.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
So, yeah.
Exactly.
It's the one that.
So.
Yeah.
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 Right.
Yeah.
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 Oh, yeah.
Sure enough, that's.
Yeah.
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 And my voice too.
Yeah.
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 Uh, welcome to the West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors meeting, uh, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four at six o'clock. Uh, just to let everybody know, the agenda is in the back of the room if you don't have one, if you'd like one. And I'd like everybody now, uh, if you please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, I'd like to announce, I'd like to announce that this meeting, um, is being recorded audio and video by third party. Uh, moving on to the next agenda item, uh, is Chair's announcement. Um, and I would like to make two announcements, actually. Uh. One is, um, unfortunately, I'll make this announcement on behalf of the board. Uh, we'd like to express our sincere condolences, um, for the passing of Phil Corbeau on October ninth at the age of seventy. A little background regarding Phil Corbeau was, he was a member of the Board of Supervisors from January one, two thousand twelve, to December thirty-first of two thousand seventeen. And he also served on the sewer authority from June thirteenth, twenty twelve, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, where Sean and myself also had the pleasure of working with him on the authority for several years. Phil's technical background, education, and experience, including the very intelligent man that he was, added a lot of input into the authority's meetings and overall sewer plant engineering plans. Phil became the first Democrat to be elected to a West Ocean Township office. He is also responsible for leading the campaign to expand our current Board of Supervisors from three to five members. Phil's forty-year career in sales, marketing, and research development took him around the globe, where he traveled extensively and managed operations in countries like Japan, India, Germany, and France. A celebration of his life is scheduled for Wednesday, October sixteenth, with a ten a.m. to eleven visitation, followed by his, his memorial service at eleven at the Donahue Funeral Home at sixteen twenty-seven Westchester Pike, uh, intermittent at Birmingham Lafayette Cemetery. And they also request, um, donations in his memory be made to all-timers. So, I'd like to just announce that. Uh, the second announcement I'd like to make is due to Election Day, which is on November fifth, which is falling on the same day as the next scheduled Board of Directors meeting. The new date for the board meeting is Thursday, November seventh at six o'clock. Uh, this new date was advertised when Chris Bayshore ran the legal ad for the twenty twenty-four meeting schedule and was posted on the calendar on the township website. The Chair also announced the date change at the organizational meeting back in January twenty twenty-four. Okay. Moving on, the next agenda item, um, is public comments. And I'd like to just say, um, the public comments will be for any item not already on the agenda, if you have any items you'd like to discuss with us. Um, also, if you could limit the public comments and any other comments made during the entire meeting to two to three minutes, um, if you could stick to that timeframe, just allow everybody the opportunity to be able to speak tonight. We'd like to hear what they have to say. Um, and with that, is there anybody that would like to make a public comment? Doug.
I'm Doug White, West Ocean, and I would just like to add to the board's recognition of Phil Corbeau. Uh, Phil, um, on behalf of the Whites, my dad, Dr. White, um, our condolences to Addie, Brian, Emily, and Julie. Uh, also, Phil was a combat veteran. Um, he was also very instrumental in the planning of our D-building and drug-in, um, planning. He was very close to my dad. Uh, and he was also like a second dad to me. Um, I just spoke to him last month. I just tried to come a couple weeks ago. Um, yeah. It's very hard for us, but thank you, Supervisors, for recognizing Phil. And for those of you listening, I mean, Phil is great. He was a big man physically, but his intellect, righteousness, and goodness was even larger. Um, he was a special guy. Thank you, Phil, for your service to our country and the service to our township. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. White. I appreciate that. Yes, Mr. Gollum.
Good evening, Supervisors. Uh, Charlie Golden, West Ocean Budget Watch Dogs. Uh, I have a few questions. Uh, we, we sent your analysis today. Sorry, it got a little late. Uh, as you can see, we've been busy. Um, the township approaching twenty-five million general fund balance by the year end. So, we taxpayers were asking for a full twenty twenty-four property tax rebate and lower our rate from two mils down to one mil moving forward. Few questions, and we have a couple people here with some other questions, uh, so I'll keep it quick. Uh, do you know that the twenty twenty-four property tax revenue is around the same amount as this year's projected general fund addition? So, the question is, why do we need this revenue?
Do you want to finish all your questions and then we can, um, I'll address them at the very end?
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Um, so, why since twenty twenty-one, the township budget process is forecasting shortfalls? Every year, instead, we have windfalls. So, doesn't that scream that it's time for the budgeting process to change? Um, another question, uh, the board compares our property tax rate to other townships' rates, which actually means nothing. It's irrelevant. It's apples to oranges. And why is that part of our budget process at all? And lastly, uh, the township's two million American Rescue Plan Act fund still has around, I think, nine hundred thousand dollars, uh, left in it. So, if it is so important to push that into our local economy, being as it's intended to rescue America, then why isn't it just as important to put the twenty-four million of our surplus back into our local economy instead of just sitting on it? All right?
Did you have any other questions?
Uh, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to address a couple things here. Um, I want to personally thank you and the committee, actually, for spending so much time and putting that together and, you know, taking time to do it. Um, it's a well-done summary and, you know, I'm glad you formed the committee. Um, it was well thought out and summarized. Um, and the board does appreciate any input that you have relative to that. Um, you know, we can miss things. That's absolutely true. Um, I don't think we did in this case. Uh, Christine did take many, many hours to review that and go over it. And I personally met and along with Asha this morning with Christine and Chris, and we spent a little over an hour to, to look at what her findings were and your findings were and compared the two together. Um, so, um, we basically, um, I think the best thing we could do moving forward is to give it the attention it deserves and give you the time and the platform that you deserve to, uh, say your, what you think regarding the budget. So, as a result of that, um, I think that we need to look at the full picture. I think right now we're looking at it through August, August thirty-first, um, the numbers, and then we're projecting what we think it's going to be for the rest of the year, which is not as accurate as having more months involved in that, as you know. And I think it would be fair to, you know, wait for Christine to actually do her study also. Um, she did a lot already up until this point, looking at what you presented or you actually submitted to us, and she did a very good job with it. Um, since it's not on the agenda for tonight, um, I would recommend that we put, um, this topic on the agenda for the November, is it fifteenth meeting? Which is nineteenth, which is where we have our actually preliminary budget meeting. Um, and then at that point, we're actually going to put your slide or a slide similar to that on there, where we can actually discuss it, maybe for ten, fifteen minutes, and go over, um, what Christine's viewpoint is, what your viewpoint is, and then we can compare apples to apples, and we'll have a little bit more data to review at that point. Um, because just looking at a preliminary, um, what was submitted to us, there was a couple of things that we thought was missing from the summary, like the two million for capital reserve, um, we didn't pay out yet, but we can't assume that that's overage or reserve or into money. Um, there was organizational changes, um, savings and salaries and benefits that were pretty substantial over the past year. Um, there were third-party zoning that we did because a result of the restructuring. Um, we also restructured a tax collector. That itself was about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, the Aqua Project reimbursement was not included in that. The building permit reserve, which had been another two hundred thousand dollars. And road paving, we were under budget by three hundred thousand dollars. So, there's a lot of things in there. Not that you maybe missed them, maybe didn't know about them, but we just want to make sure that those slides have been reviewed and we give it the proper attention that it needs. So, I don't know if the board wants to answer some of the questions tonight very briefly, um, within ten minutes.
If I can say something, though, but those are Christine's numbers in our summary. And we're projecting an additional five million dollars added to the surplus this year, but with everything you just mentioned, we think it's probably going to be around the three million. So, every year since twenty twenty-one, we've been adding about three million dollars, and it seems to me that it's going in a pretty steady, that's a pretty steady trend. So, this is why we're asking. We're asking for, to, to give back the three million dollars this year. We know exactly where our spending is, and we'll go over those numbers. Uh, again, we're asking for a change in the budgeting process. If we wait till mid-November, that's the same process. It's too late for us to really give you and discuss with you our ideas and our input. If we get, if we get on your agenda for November.
Second.
Second, November fifth, whatever.
Second.
Seventh, November seventh. If we get on your agenda for November seventh, that gives us an opportunity.
Second year's the nineteenth.
The nineteenth, November nineteenth.
Hmm, see, that's too late. That's, that's the normal process. We're asking for a change in the process. And not to take up too much more of your time, maybe we can continue to talk about this outside of this meeting, but we are asking, we don't even think it's a big ask. We're asking for a tax adjustment because we're sitting on twenty-five million, possibly by the end of this year, even with everything considered. I think that's where it's going to end up. And when we had a reserve fund study group way back in twenty sixteen, I believe the target was more like ten million. So, that's how big of a difference it is. But I'll let, I'll let some of the other people ask questions. I really didn't get any answers tonight to my questions, so I just prefer getting, getting them addressed one at a time. But again, we're looking for change in the process. Uh, we're looking for a rebate and a mileage adjustment. And again, if it's so important to rush that American Rescue Fund into our economy, then how can we be sitting on such a large, a, a large surplus? Why don't we put that back into our economy as well? Thank you.
Does anybody want to make a comment relative to that?
Well, I think it's a good idea to have this as part of a budget discussion. I mean, I personally, November second, November nineteenth, doesn't make a difference. We know what the ask is. You articulated it for two or three meetings in a row, so it's nothing here that we don't know. I don't think the two weeks makes a difference. I would actually like to give Christine the chance to pull all the final budget numbers together. I certainly don't think it's a five million dollar surplus. You haven't taken into account the two million. You haven't taken into account the annual contributions. We have other expenses following the latter quarter of the year, so that's an inaccurate statement. So, let's give Christine the chance to pull the full budget together and have the discussion in November.
Yeah. How about you look at the full picture?
And I did want to mention, if you find anything wrong, we're asking Christine to identify that. We think we're repeating her numbers back to her, but you're absolutely right, Sean. It's not going to end up as a five million add this year, but I think it's going to add up as another three million. But what was forecasted was a deficit, was a negative number. This is why we think the budgeting process has to change.
Thank you, Mr. Gollum. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Um, anybody else have a couple of comments? Yes, sir.
I'm Ed Minka. I live in a village in Shannon. And I wanted to inquire about the, uh, department budget meetings. Uh, have, have they begun yet?
Yes, we had individual department head meetings in September.
And those numbers will be the numbers that we use in the preliminary budget?
There are some adjustments that are being made as a result of the meetings, but generally speaking, yes.
So, if these little numbers, I'm wondering if it's possible to have those numbers for each department as they're completed, posted on the website, so that we've got a chance to review them?
That's looking, as the vice chair said, that's looking at things in a vacuum. You're looking at individual departments. You also have to take into account the revenue as well. That's where the budgeting process comes from. To do anything else would be irresponsible.
Well, it's just to understand what the date is ahead of time.
But again, those can change as.
Well, because that's preliminary budget, right?
Well, those can change, as Mr. Walsh said, to allow our finance director to bring everything together to get the full picture. That is the best way to look at it. And we are also still getting numbers from our department heads that are coming in regularly.
Okay, so the department meeting.
It's.
Meeting isn't the final.
It's correct. It's preliminary. It's to review the preliminary numbers.
And the board still has to review those numbers to, and agree on them.
So, are there Supervisors that meet with you in the department or senior meeting?
They can come and meet with us anytime they want. They don't attend the individual department head meetings, but they can come talk to us anytime they want.
So, uh, again, we're looking at a loss of opportunity for the public to participate.
I vehemently disagree with your comment.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, yeah, one thing that comes, I repeated that, is going to make this point, is there are, there is on our website, every budget for the last, I think, ten years available in detail with all the summaries. You look at it year on year, it's very clear, there's much change in general overall, where the money gets spent, you know, these, you know, so you can get a very good appreciation for what the budget will look like from the history that's already been out there. And then we do need to give our finance team the time to pull together what those, uh, changes are going to look like with respect to twenty twenty-five. So, that's why I've processed it as a public view of it in November, allows it to be discussed with the board, to have some challenges. Thirty-day public comment period is, to my mind, perfectly reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other public comments? Or do you?
Hi, good evening, or, excuse me, Marty Swart. Thank you, just thank you. I can tell you're really listening, and you know how much it means to us, and I just appreciate the steps that you're taking. Um, I do want to discuss this next meeting on November seventh, and, you know, I'm pretty much resigned. I'm used to seeing the budget for the first time in the middle of November. And I'm wondering if we can still add a budget discussion, um, specifically for the next meeting, simply regarding the, uh, funded balance policy? And, and just lead the discussion to the fund balance policy. That way, we're not rushing Christine to push anything out sooner than she normally, um, is scheduled for. Um, for instance, this is a page from the two thousand sixteen budget. Many years ago, the budget included a nice blocked-out fund balance policy, and it clearly states, "Our fund balance policy recommends twenty percent of fund balance of annual expenditures." That's your written financial policy, twenty percent of annual expenditures. That gets us to four million dollars. That's all your policy recommends. Now, I understand over the years I've asked about it and you said, "Well, that's a minimum." Great, so we doubled that even two and a half times. So, we've been at ten million. So, ten million was always considered a very healthy reserve. In fact, Moody's, um, considers thirty-five percent for their triple-A rating. So, we're way back, we're over a hundred percent. We're looking at a hundred and thirty-three percent. So, I think this policy needs work as far as, okay, we know what the minimum is, but what's your maximum? What are we going to do when it gets to fifty percent or seventy-five percent or a hundred percent? So, you know, I respectfully request that fund balance policy discussion be on the agenda for, for two, and for the next two weeks. Um, I'm just so pleased that we're getting this far, that I will leave some of my other comments and maybe just we'll leave them to the Budget Committee and, and send any additional, um, emails. But again, this is right from your policy booklet. It is the policy of the township to maintain a minimum general fund unassigned balance to be used for unanticipated emergencies of approximately twenty percent. It's there in black and white. So, um, again, second-class township code talks about, um, uh, operating reserve a maximum of twenty-five percent. It can't go over twenty-five percent. So, whether we need to create another, yes, Chris, it does. I'll send it to you.[1467.51] I actually have it here and, you know, thank you. I'm just need one second. Section 1508.1B. "The Board of Supervisors may annually make appropriations from the General Township Fund to the Operating Reserve Fund." Now, we don't have a separate operating reserve fund. We use what our balance is as the operating reserve fund if the effect of the appropriation would cause the fund to exceed 25% of the estimated revenues of Township's general fund in current year." I'm sorry. "The Township may annually make appropriations from the general fund to the operating reserve fund, but no appropriation shall be made to the operating reserve fund if the effect of the appropriation would cause the fund to exceed 25%." So you know I researched, I'm looking everywhere for any municipality that carries this much money. And I can't find it. It's excessive. And the residents and the businesses that built that reserve fund are to refund and a tax, property tax reduction next year because we have find it. Thank you again for your consideration.
I will make one comment relative to that. The money that's in the reserves right now, there's no cap. You're not required to have a cap. You're not even required to have a minimum. We do, that money in there basically right now will be depleted. It can be depleted quickly because we have a lot of projects. We have the stormwater engineering projects. We have to keep in mind that the revenues that we were getting are we are not going to get in the future. Greystone is coming to an end. There's a lot of revenue that we have right now that we're going to lose. So yes, we do have to have a reserve. Yes, we do have to be ready for emergencies and incidents that have occurred and will continue to occur in the township. And that's our job to make sure we have that money there available.
And with all due respect, I believe you and Ms. Gagne are both getting the capital reserve confused with the general fund reserve. I understand we put money, we transfer money every year to the capital reserve fund, which is for stormwater projects and equipment and infrastructure and roads. We have that, and that's the fund I believe you're referring to that will be depleted. I'm talking about what's left in the general fund. Those are unassigned monies by law. They have, they're unassigned. And it's $20 million a year of unassigned funds.
The only way to fund the capital projects that the chair is referring to is to transfer that money from the general fund to the capital reserve fund. So no, she is not confusing them, and neither is Chair Gagne. That is going to get depleted as we transfer those, as the ARPA money adds, as the excess, not excessive, the increased number of building permits and transfer tax revenue that we're getting, as that slows down, you're not going to be that, we're there all the time.
Tina, may I make a suggestion? I actually think Marge has a good point relative to having a separate agenda item to discuss solely the fund balances. Because otherwise, it will bog down the whole discussion around the detailed budget analysis that Christine will be doing and all those other funds that we talk about. So I would support the idea of having a gender item on November 7th to specifically discuss this. So it's not a public comment issue. We're not holding up other people who are here to present. We'll have it as a specific gender item is my recommendation for the board to consider. And then we'll get this particular issue out of the way. And hopefully, we won't be having the same conversation in November, right, guys? So on the second meeting, we'll have done that. We'll just be talking about some budget line item details there. So that's my recommendation.
I agree with that. Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Neither will be briefed now because most of them are moved.
Okay.
But maybe more, maybe I'll sell the crystal, as you guys know me. So I'm going to go on the premise that we're all sincere here, and I do genuinely believe that. So just working backwards with dates so that we all know them here. The budget is officially set, meaning that we're done, we've done the debating, everything else. What is that? What date would that be?
Well, legally, it has to be done by December 31st of each year, but generally, it's the second meeting in December, which this year is December 7th.
Okay, so December 7th. So then the budget will have been finalized, meaning that we've done all the dating, we've come back and forth. That would be 30 days prior to that?
No, that is inaccurate. So what has to happen, what has to happen is it gets authorized for advertising, which would be done at the second meeting in November. There is a public comment review period as prescribed by the Second Class Township Code. And it's reviewed, it's made available for public review. And then there are changes that can occur between when that happens and final adoption.
Okay, so then the finalized one that is to be advertised would be, what roughly would that be?
It would be authorized November 19th.
November 19th.
Made available the next day.
Okay, so that's November 19th. Nice to hear. Because I'm just trying to work backwards to how much time that we had. So that means between now, which is like this 15th of October, to November 19th is all the discussion that has to go back and forth. Is that a fair statement? That's the...
Yeah, it's a fair statement. And to my point that there's all this history of budgets available, there's nothing stopping you saying, firing emails and saying, "I don't agree with..." "I don't agree with support for this," so I think we should do that. You can do it now, we're just...
No, I want to make sure. So basically, the meat of the, if you want to go discussion, has to cover the curve between now, today, and tonight, and the 19th of November.
I mean, it's been occurring since the last meeting when somebody first raised the issue of the fund balance. So it's happened, happening.
I've learned something. You guys are great, you know that. I'm going to give you a few people and you're all set. Okay, thank you very much for your time. Greatly appreciate it.
Okay, excuse me, is there any other public comment? Okay, moving on, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is discussion regarding the following application before the zoning hearing board, which is Application Number 1024, Application for 830 Bolmar Street and 650 West Town Road, which is A Dewey Pile, seeking a variance from Section 84-47G1A of the zoning ordinance to install a six-foot fence where a four-foot fence is permitted. And Shelby, would you like to take this over?
Yeah. Even better. Before the Board of Supervisors this evening is zoning hearing board application number 10-2024. This application is for the property located in 830 Bolmar Street and 650 West Town Road. The applicant is A Dewey Pile Inc., and as mentioned, they are seeking relief from Section 8447G1A of the zoning ordinance in order to construct a six-foot fence where a maximum of four foot is permitted. As noted in the application, the applicant is seeking this variance in order to install new fencing to match the style and size of the existing fencing on-site as well as to provide protection for the vehicles of the applicant's employees scheduled to go before the zoning hearing board on Monday, October 28th. So a week from Monday.
Does the board have any questions for Shelby relative to this application?
I have a question. Just for clarification, there's two applications here, is it not?
Yeah, they did provide...
Two separate locations?
Two applications because there is two parcels, the 830 South, or 830 Bolmar Street, and then there's 650 West Town Road. So that instead of putting them, even though they both list them both on the same application, they did provide two applications.
Just for clarification, because they only submitted the fee for one hearing or application. I just want to clarify, since there are two applications here, should they be submitting two fees?
I don't have it.
I've never encountered this situation. It's technically a, it could be a policy determination for the board. It's technically only one hearing, so those fees are designed to incur your costs. So it's only going to be one hearing, so we're only going to incur the cost for a quarter, quarter once, advertising once.
It's a savings.
Exactly. It just happens to be a situation where they own two parcels that make up the overall application.
I just want to be clear, I mean, that's a specific kind of situation here. Normally, for each application, there should be a fee associated with that application. But in this case here, it's the same issue, and it's just same owner.
And again, we're not, the township isn't incurring the cost of a second hearing, so to speak.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one question. Shortly this evening, we're going to be looking at potential amendment to our zoning ordinance, pertaining to fences and walls. And one of the clarifications in that zoning ordinance is that "No fence shall impede the natural flow of water in any water course, ditch, or swale across a sanitary sewer or stormwater management easement. Impede the flow of stormwater will be placed in a manner to impact required side distance or clear side triangle." Is there, is this application going to be installing a fence that would have an issue with that new clause in our potential updated ordinance?
It would not. And the applicant does note in their addendum that the proposed fence would not interfere with the site distance of motorists due to transparency of the fence material itself. So they're aware, we have made them aware of the upcoming changes, and they have kept that on their record.
And that Bolmar Street property where we put the new culvert in, that is not a swale on the side of the road there to move stormwater to that culvert, is that correct?
The swale is located... That section of the property you're already cutting, just according to that?
It doesn't, no. It's the front jump Bolmar Street.
Yeah, the proposed fence in Bolmar, so here, it's back here where the edge of their parking lot is. It looks like, so the culvert, which is right where these red lines is, is not...
Okay, there's no swale running down while it's towards that culvert.
That's what we're trying to get over now.
Well, just depending on what happens until the ordinance passes, maybe we just make sure the zoning hearing board is aware of that clause for the discussion with the applicant. Thank you.
I was going to ask everybody, want to take a position? Nate, you are maybe neutral? Okay. We will remain neutral then on that subject at this point. Okay, moving on to Item Number Five, which is discussion regarding the 2025 budget requests for Goshen Fire Company and Good Fellowship Ambulance Company. And I think we're also going to add to that discussion ATV costs at this point for budgeting purposes for Greystone and for other uses, obviously, Good Fellowship, things of war. So regarding that, this is also prompted by, just to give you a little bit of background, myself, Chris, and John did have a meeting with Good Fellowship to prepare for any and all emergency equipment that's necessary for Greystone to try to get it ready. And like I said, we did add the funding for the ATV discussion. So with that, I'm going to start off with reading to you a discussion regarding what the ask is, and then I'll have Chad do a presentation, if that's okay. Before the board is discussion regarding the 2025 budget requests for Goshen Fire Company and Good Fellowship Ambulance Company. The request for Goshen Fire Company represents a 9% increase compared to 2024. And the request from Good Fellowship represents a 5.3% increase compared to 2024. Based on these requests, the 2025 budgetary allocation for the fire and EMS, including the Westchester Fire Department, would be Westchester Fire Department, $360,0024, Goshen Fire, $342,874, Good Fellowship Ambulance Company, $146,314, with a total of $857,432. The overall total represents a 6% increase for this budget item compared to 2024. As the board is aware, the township entered into service contracts with Good Fellowship Ambulance Company and Goshen Fire in 20 and 23, respectively. The former covered three years and the latter covered two years, which we worked through with the Coalition. While the contracts did not set forth a specific amount for each year, they did establish a formula, which is determine the funding levels for each year. In reviewing the documentation provided, it appears that the established formulas have been followed, which is each of the companies. Regarding the service contract for Westchester Fire Department, the increase in amount outlined is per the agreement, which continues through the year 2028. This agreement set the annual contribution amount and included increase of 3.4% each year within the contract. As a result of that, Chad, do you want to just do the presentation right now? Does everybody have a copy of it that was left here on our dashboard?
This is, so just for the boards, where this presentation is mostly related to the ATV track, Chad?
It's both. It's an update on Good Fellowship 25 budget and the ATV, so kind of all of them. Chad Bergen, I'm the interim executive director from Good Fellowship Ambulance here. Provide an update on Good Fellowship over the past year and then look forward to 2025 for our budget needs as well as the special capital request. I'm going to start off here with a recognition from American Heart Association. So we received this earlier this year. This recognizes our provider's care of stroke, heart attack, and chest pain. We are the only EMS agency in Chester County that's been able to achieve this year over year in the highest level recognition. We get this because we're transparent with our data with the American Heart Association. They look at that and report us. We're pretty proud of that. I'm the chair of the group here, really speaks to the quality of care that we provide to Westchester. Some updates here for 2024, some successes. We really pride ourselves on evidence-based care. So new initiatives this year, we implemented a TXA protocol. Very simply, TXA is a medication that essentially forces the body to clot. We use this for trauma patients, postpartum hemorrhage. We've had it with our paramedics for about four or five months now. Had incredible success so far, truly stabilized us. With that, we coupled that with a hyperthermia prevention initiative to make sure that these trauma patients that have bleeding or staying warm, we put new tools in place for our paramedics to use. Also having great success, we're working with Bailey Hospitals, trauma center on that. So doing a really great job there. We did receive two new ambulances this year, which were greatly needed. We've been behind on our vehicle replacement really since the pandemic with the supply chain issue. So receiving these two called us back up finally after three or four years. We're happy to say one of them was actually fully funded by an anonymous donor. So that's the vehicle plus all the equipment fully funded. We're really proud of that, thankfully. It is the second ambulance in the last five or six years that that donor has purchased for us. So we lucked out there, thankfully. Leadership development, that's been an initiative for the past 25 years, pretty important to us. So we are actually sending our supervisors to Canadian Leadership Academy, originally started for law enforcement. Many West Ocean Township police officers have gone through it. I went through it first in 2020, and since then, we've sent two a year. So we had two supervisors complete that successfully this year. That's actually a West Point program that was adopted, formulated as a law enforcement, is now is called to all disciplines to develop here. So we did have some promotions this year as well for supervisory staff. One thing of note that we did earlier this year, and this is the second time we've worked with Westchester Fire Department, to actually reduce EMS dispatches on low-risk fire calls. So give me an example. Somebody calls 911 because their dryer is smoking. Before this year, that would dispatch the fire department and an ambulance to it. So if there's no indication of a need for an ambulance or a patient, we've actually come off a lot of those calls. Keeps us efficient, keeps the ambulance available for those who need it, keeps the cost down too. We're not time with staff, fuel, maintenance, that kind of thing. So we've done that with a few different vent types. This year, we last looked at that probably 2018, 19. So trying to keep it as efficient as possible.
Chad has a question?
Sure.
So what percent of calls does that represent? Is it less than 1%?
Yeah, I would say it's probably right around 1%. It's pretty small. But again, we just want to make sure we keep the ambulance available for those who need it. We're soon to receive a new rehab vehicle. So in short, that's a specialty vehicle, it's not an ambulance. Carries a ton of specialty equipment for large incidents, mass casualty, large fires, anything like that that needs additional support. We've had a vehicle, it's actually been a trailer for the past 12 years. That's being replaced with an actual vehicle now. Fully funded with federal tariffs and task force money at around $100,000. So we should have that in the next couple of weeks. And last, probably, I think our highlight of the year is all the behavioral health initiatives that we brought out, really coupled with Chester County Hospital and Agent Behavioral Health. Most notably, we actually identified a program elsewhere in the Commonwealth that transports voluntary behavioral health patients using the SUV. That's retrofitting instead of an ambulance. More efficient, cheaper, protects the dignity of the patient as well. So we started that in July and so far, so good. Okay, so Fellowship is a whole here. So this is our total coverage area. Newland Township, all the way to East Ocean Township, that's 64 square miles there. About 90,000 people, plus 17,000 college students. So about 7,500 calls annually in that total coverage area. Specific to West Goshen there, Good Fellowship provides different levels of service to different parts of the township. So the western side here, we provide BLS and ALS. BLS is essentially the ambulance that does the transport. ALS is the paramedic, the highest level care providers for patients of high difficulty that potentially have life-threatening emergencies. So we provide both of those services to the western portion. We provide just the ALS service to the eastern portion with Goshen Fire Company providing ambulance there. In West Goshen, Good Fellowship responds to about 1,800 calls a year. That's where West Goshen falls within our total coverage area. So as far as consumption of the service, Westchester Borough is our busiest. West Goshen is normally our second busiest area. So we'll get into our budget here. So looking forward to 2025 with where we all gave our draft. That is our projected revenue, projected expense. As West Goshen's been wonderful and progressive with this, they understand that the revenue is a huge challenge for us. So that is slowly increasing year over year. The problem is the expenses are quickly increasing. It's certainly not keeping up with the revenue we're getting from Medicaid, Medicare, commercial insurance, stuff like that. We're in the economy right now, so people that have out-of-pocket costs are having a hard time paying that as well. So we're seeing that impact. So just our operating costs, a little over a million-dollar deficit. We put on our average capital need on top of that. That's where that $1.4 million comes every single year that we can try to make up. So how do we do that? We ask all 10 of our townships to essentially support part of that $1.4 million, which you'll see the total amount here shortly. Donations, your subscription driver comes to your mailbox, that helps offset this. Grants. We also have a training institute here. We teach a lot of the new EMTs and paramedics in the Tri-State area. Any revenue that comes in from that, we apply back into the organization's revenue if there's profit there. So unfortunately, going forward, municipal funding is going to increase because those expenses keep jumping faster than the revenue from insurance companies. I think that's been the trend that fueled for the last few years. So that is normal. That's a nationwide problem too. We're doing the best we can to manage the expenses and be transparent with the township as well. So here's where we...
Can I ask you a question? Of those funding sources that you mentioned, if you try to compensate for the deficit that you experience every year, you have municipal funding, donations, grants, and training institute revenue. Were your donations, grants, and training institute revenue, is that pretty much sustainable and pretty much steady, would you say?
So I don't know if I would call it steady. So training institute's a great example. So a lot of our training institutes based on contracts. So we have a contract to teach all the new paramedics in Newcastle County, Delaware. That's really good to us. That could go away tomorrow, though, so we see that from time to time. You know, there's been a change in the demand for education too. Pre-COVID, we were filling almost every single class we have, we're just not seeing that anymore. So our training institute has not been as reliable to push in some of those profits, unfortunately. So they pretty much break even every single year. However, included in that break even is a management fee back to Good Fellowship, the organization. So that helps also a lot.
I mean, like you mentioned, this is a countrywide problem. We find this particularly happening all throughout Pennsylvania. As far as your municipal municipals, I mean, that's going to be, would you say, is a fair statement, your primary go-to source to be able to make up for your deficit? All right, you continue. How many kind of services that you're expecting to do?
Admittedly, it is a sustainable source here. So, and you know, as these expenses grow, you know, we probably all are going to come to you. You know, you're paying less than half of it right now of the deficit. So when we started our contract, which will all be the year three of our three-year contract here, we ran a 50-50 split of that deficit. We're below that now. So potentially, we may have to make an adjustment as we get into our next contract cycle. Probably even more than 50-50, it may be more of a 60-40 split, 60% long municipalities. Because trying to achieve that other half of donations is just a huge challenge. We were able to overcome it in 2024 because we got that $350,000 donation.
And that's a one-time shot.
That's a one-off, yeah. We're not going to get that again. So try to get that amount of money.
In the past five years, is it fair to say that your municipal contribution request has doubled?
Five years from now?
Over the past five years?
Oh, absolutely.
Even more than that, maybe?
So I can tell you, I started my role here in 2015. At the time, Good Fellowship was getting $24,000 from nine municipalities. We're walking to 2025 with $608,000. So it's been a substantial jump.
And you see that in two, ten years as well?
Hopefully not at that rate, but yes, I'd say it's been increasing, so.
Well, we have to prepare ourselves, because that's why we're on main functions as a board here. That's implied for the safety, health and safety of our residents. And we have to have the funding available to be able to do that.
So just some of our keys here. Insurance, workers' comp is becoming a big challenge in Pennsylvania for fire EMS providers. I'm sure Ocean will speak to that as well. Insurance companies see us as very risky, rightfully so. On top of that, vehicle insurance is becoming a challenge as well for fire EMS providers. Again, we're risky. And I think nationwide, there's a lot of insurance challenges, and we're seeing it here in Pennsylvania as well with risk. Medical supplies, I know I spoke about it last year, coming out of supply chain issues. Medications are very expensive. A lot of them are manufactured in China, packaged in India, compared with the US. That process is very expensive right now. I think a note here, which is new for us is facilities. We're starting to look at long-term. We've outgrown all of our facilities. To the extent, next year, we may have to look for additional space to put some of our specialty equipment. That's something we're considering right now in our budget, do not factor it in quite yet, but something that we'll open. This is a very busy slide. I just want to point out here that we do use a funding formula, as the vice chair said. So our formula is weighted 50% on consumption over a 12-month period, and then another 50% on the population that Good Fellowship serves. So if Good Fellowship only covers 50% of the township, we factor in only 50% of the population in this formula. So West Ocean's on here twice, because again, we provide different service levels to different parts of the township. So this formula ensures that all the municipalities are paying their fair share based on the service and population that Good Fellowship serves.
Chad, do you have contracts with all the other townships on this list?
We do not. We have contracts with five of the 10. What is good about that, though, the five largest ones have contracted with us.
And the ones that don't have a contract, do they pay their fair share for this formula? Or are they, are you worried that they may not?
In 2024, all but one township paid their fair share. The one township paid $1,000 less than what we asked for. Other than that, everyone else paid their fair share. Next slide. So this is the total breakout for all 10 of the municipalities that Good Fellowship provides service to. Again, these numbers come directly out of the formula, and that is West Ocean's number for 2025. And that should take us to the end of the contract amount. Unless there's any questions on that, we can talk about the ATV.
Yes, we're going to the ATV. That's okay, we did.
So, you know, as the vice chair said, we've been having some discussions about the potential resource needs for Greystone, specifically around the trail system. You know, we had originally identified that potentially there could be money available within West Ocean to cover that. There's some restrictions on the use though. We, as an organization, feel strongly that all the municipalities to benefit from this. So we believe it's only fair if we split the cost of this between the five that I feel would benefit the most from this. So the next slide there. So what will we use these for? Access to trails, parks, open space. This picture you see here was actually from last weekend. So this is just the most recent example. This gentleman had a leg injury and actually had been carried out on that metal basket you see about 150 feet to the end. So this was East Bradford Township.
On the hill trail?
No, this was behind a neighborhood in Ravine. I think he was just out walking in the tripping bell, so.
Was there an ATV available?
No.
No, so you had to physically carry?
Yep, so.
So while we're talking about East Bradford, so if you have a call for emergency response today for the trail system over there, you know, it's official title, let's call it what we do, you know, right? How do you respond? Does it just go up on the trail with the crew and with the stretcher?
Yeah, so right now, specifically East Bradford, we would use West Bradford Fire Company's ATV, and we consider that for the entire region. Our concern is West Bradford Fire Company keeps their ATV, their substation, which is on the Downingtown side of West Bradford. And the concern was, you know, sure, if we called for it in West Ocean, would they be willing to bring it? But the concern about the time that would take, though. So I've spoken to West Bradford's fire chief for years about this, and he actually agrees having two in the region would be beneficial. You know, not only do we have to get this patient out of there, we have to get all those people to that patient as well. So he felt strong, we'll have one in West Bradford, having one in Westchester would make sense.
And they found that themselves, West Bradford?
West Bradford Township, I believe, so.
How long has it been there?
Three to four years, I think, so.
There was a specific need that they identified for that?
Yeah, West Bradford, I think it was tied to the Emeryville property when the township called that. They wanted to make sure they had access for EMS. So West Bradford Fire Company does not provide EMS, but they got an EMS capable ATV.
And just so the board is aware, this ATV is going to be stored at Good Fellowship location, not at Greystone specifically. So it can be used for other purposes in other places.
Yep. Inclined in weather as well, you know, right after a snowstorm, we do have patients from time to time that can't get to their driveway. So a steep driveway that's snow-covered, this would be a great use. Reduces injuries to our providers too, most importantly, using a tool like this, so.
So where would it be stored? Would it be stored in West Ocean, just marked in Greystone Park? Or are you certainly running out of space?
We are running out of space.
So where are you going to put it?
It would be stored at Good Fellowship or close to Good Fellowship, probably in West Ocean, so.
So close, no, not going in the wrong direction?
No, it's not going to be far away. We need it close to our stations when we get to a time link, so.
Dr. Wade, you have a question?
Chad, are you going to transport it with a trailer?
We will have a trailer as well. So if it's not somewhere close that we can drive to, we'll use a trailer to get it there. So if something in East Bradford, we'll use a trailer. So we're pleased, appreciate that, driving to East Bradford. We have that next slide there. The other benefit here too, so this is also a picture of the Chili Club off last weekend in Westchester, really more specific to the Borough. And again, that's why I think we split this several different ways here. Should something happen in that event there, most of those roadways are blocked with trucks or concrete barriers. We need a smaller vehicle to be able to transport somebody. So planned events is another good use of a vehicle like this. So here's where we're at with the total cost of this, trailer, outfitting, the piece that holds the ambulance stretcher as well is $46,000. We did apply for a state grant through Senator Comino's office. There is some interest in splitting that with Senator King's office as well because of Westham and Corbury, so we've not heard about that yet. What we're asking five townships to do though is budget a fifth of the cost of it in case this grant does not come to fruition. So that's Westchester Borough, West Ocean Township, East Bradford, Westham and Corbury. So looking to split it five ways, so it's a regional asset, everybody pays for part of it, it's been under two hundred one. Happy to answer any questions.
Have you talked to these other four municipalities?
I have.
Are you in any issue with them yet?
Yep, nobody's committed fully yet. So I'll tell you, one of them has a development that this could be a condition for based on the development. So there's some interest there, no full commitments yet, but we're continuing this conversation, so.
And let's hope we get the grant, which on that one, about four weeks.
The grant will make it a lot easier, so.
So which grant program is it you've applied through?
I think it's, I think it's the development money.
Yes.
So through the senators.
Carolyn, come in. She has supported that. She's also supported, and we submitted an application for emergency blocking vehicle with the Coalition. Poor Steve Pelman, he was working overtime and sending 60 people down with a storm, and last minute, I pushed him and he did get it done. So she's behind it 100%. That would be a $50,000 grant, and same with your grant, it would be $50,000.
Yeah, you know, we've had a lot of conversations with Westham too. I should present to them next week. They're looking at the gray building property that this is a good use, that they see a value to. So there's definitely some support there in Westham. But we'll get to the conversation in the next couple of weeks with all the townships. Hopefully the grant comes through and we won't need it. But I think just timing-wise here, we'd like to get into the budget's request, and hopefully we don't need it with the grant, so.
Is that a grant applied to the local share grant? Is that a local share?
No, this is, comes from economic development, and it literally just comes to us in payment, and then we can live on a report that we spent the money on paperwork related to this.
Are you looking to buy this January 1st, assuming it's projected to fall?
Yeah, if the grant comes through, we should have it by the end of the year, so.
If the grant doesn't come through, you get the approval from municipalities, you'd still want to buy it at the beginning of the year, right?
Yeah, I understand the township has a date, they may take ownership of the property at Greystone. I think the feeling was, we'd like to have this available to us by that date. I mean, there's plenty of other needs again in the entire region, and that sooner than later would be valuable. Again, just last weekend, we moved it.
How long does it take to get this?
So from what I understand, my friend's at the police department here, recently purchased one, it took a few weeks, if I'm not mistaken, so about the same timeline there from the time we were.
And retrofitting will take about another week or so?
Yeah, probably two or three weeks. So the trailer's available on the lot, that's easy, so. I'd rather not speak to Andrea in our office, because I believe the police fire, I believe she said that they recently purchased one, so maybe talk to her about the timeline.
Any other questions from the board regarding the ATV or the costs associated with?
I just want to point out a picture here. You can see this actually holds the ambulance stretcher. That's what's specific about this. So the stretcher comes out of the ambulance, and it looks right in there, and it's safe for the patient then, so.
Do you want to make any decisions tonight, or just for discussion purposes at this point?
I have actually no problem making that a line up, you know, in our budget to figure it out.
Sean, what's your thoughts?
I'm just conscious that Ashley isn't here. I mean, if we make the decision during the budget discussions at the next month, keep your mind at that, right? Absolutely. I'd rather just thank you for your input, it's very, get all the information we need, just have the conversation with the full board and decide about this in the budget.
Nate, what's your position?
I agree.
Okay. We all agree, we will discuss it in November, and hopefully we'll have had grant information by then, okay? Thank you very much, Chad.
I have to make a comment not specific to that request, but I recently learned that the LSI local services tax, LST, LST tax, that our revenue every year is about 1,100, oh, sorry, 1.1 million. I personally would like to see that set aside as a fire EMS fund. By law, 25% of those revenues from that LSI tax need, by law mandated, to go to fire EMS. So of the 1.1 million budgeted in 2024 from LSI, that means a dedicated 200, yeah, 277, 277,000 of that should be dedicated to fire EMS. And then just last month in September, we received 228 from the state for the foreign buyer insurance. So combined, that's 506, 506,000. So what's actually coming from tax revenue that's going to fire EMS all free is 857. I personally think that-
Mind you, I just have to ask a question on this. The foreign buyer, whatever it is called, that is not included in this budget's request. That's an addition to the 857.
That is totally separate governed by specific rules on how it can be utilized.
It's not part of the contribution from the township.
Right, but that has to go to EMS.
Yeah, absolutely. And the board put it down on that allocation at the October 1st meeting, and it's been distributed accordingly.
Right, and I'm just making the suggestion, we've heard about this, all these with funding, we've heard about that, that if we took that 1.1 million from LSI tax that was originally, I believe when it was passed many years ago, was supposed to be specific for fire EMS.
We fund over $800,000 to fire EMS, between all three of them.
I think we have plenty of revenue, and we should buy that 1.1 million into fire EMS. Just my comments. And have that as a separate, separate fund, fire EMS.
Thank you, Ma'am.
Is that any other comments from the board, or any other further comments?
One other comment I would maybe make is, and I think you alluded to this when you went through the introduction, Tina, the total request from the three fire and EMS municipal offices, 857,000, 2025, including the ATV thing. That represents about 4.5% of our general fund budget, and John said earlier, you know, for an essential service like fire and EMS, that all residents really appreciate relying on the service levels, et cetera, these providers have been excellent. We don't get complaints, so we didn't township about service. So, you know, I think that's a, even at the increased cost that we see today, I'm not talking about the future, that's got its own burdens, right? But as long as the increased cost we see today, that I feel this is an appropriate value, certainly one of the best values that we get, although there's always room for improvement in the costs that we'll talk about.
And the good service that we get, from both entities, I should say. Ocean also, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chad, I appreciate it. Moving on to our next discussion will be regarding the Government Services Center base in retrofit.
That was chairman, here's the fire company.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry.
Well, we're trying to sneak out.
Can't sneak out.
Grant, we subjected Chad to that, so you're not getting away scot-free, man.
Thank you. My name is Grant Everhart, Deputy Fire Chief of the Ocean Fire Company, and also Executive Director, so I handle most of the financials. Last couple of months, a lot of budget stuff.
I was going to say, you do it all. Don't lie.
So, yeah, next slide. So we prepared our income and expense forecast for fiscal year '25. It's still a little bit of a moving target, but we think we have a fairly tight forecast based on our projected 2024 spend in our 2024 income. Some notable items, EMS billing and EMS subscriptions represent 52% of our budget. We receive about $1.9 million from those two income sources. Fundraising and donations represent 12%. Township contributions represent 30%. And similar to the discussion with Chad, that has increased significantly over the past five years. Our operating expense includes annual wage increases for our 12 full-time firefighter EMTs, and also for our part-time staff, anticipated increases in healthcare orders comp. And we also have to increase our apparatus replacement reserve funding from $256,708 per year to 200, 256,708 to 276,000, just due to the steep increases in the cost of apparatus. A couple of years ago, we bought an ambulance for $185,000, and we just bought one in July, fully outfitted, it was about $420,000. So it's, you can blame it on supply chain issues, supply chain issues, labor costs, whatever, EMS, ambulance, and fire trucks have just, have literally doubled the cost of our, of our day use. Couple of notes to the forecast, we're showing total budget includes an estimated breakdown for fire and EMS income expenses, and then fire, police income and expenses are included under the fire portion. We have a pretty healthy fire police organization, about 20 members, but we include their costs when you thought about it.
So Grant, maybe if you just asked a couple of questions from this chief?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer.
So I looked at, I know a couple of things stood out to me. On the 2024 budget, your fundraising fell short by 36%. I know your big fundraiser is the bear.
Yes.
It seemed like the weather was pretty good, it seemed like a regular year, so what was the miss attributed to?
Actually, we had a complete washout on Saturday night.
The biggest night, yeah.
Which is, that's our, that's our.
And that's, that's a big contributor to the total week, right?
Yes, and overall, almost every night that week was just down a little bit year over year. I don't know if it was just the heat and humidity, but, and that, we rely heavily on fundraising, but, you know, I kind of joke about it, but one rainy night and we.
That makes sense, thank you. And the other line I like, and there was down, quite substantially, was the subscriptions. I wondered if that was a continuing trend year over year that you're seeing that the EMS subscriptions are declining?
It peaked over COVID, and then it's trailed off since then. I think we're down 5% to 10% this year. And then our, our donation drive is coupled, it's in the same letter, and we're seeing a similar- And then our donation drive is coupled, it's in the same letter and we're seeing a similar decrease in just the general donations. So we're about to launch our 2025 subscription campaign. We'll know very quickly for the big results, about how that's going to look. But we are seeing a decline, sort of discretionary donations that are being made from our company. So that obviously puts pressure on the bottom line.
I see a lot of your income also, you come from grants, 96% variance. What do you anticipate for 2025 in that grant? I know it's hard to judge, but.
It's hard to judge. We have a couple out there, grant applications. We have a FEMA grant out for $160,000. We should see it. We should get an answer within a month or so.
Okay.
We applied for an LS8 grant for apparatus purchase for $550,000. We should know that this month or next month. That'd be a help. And then we applied for a building grant through Congressman Cooliehand's office for $2 million. I think all the townships provide great support for that. So that, the grant number could be.
Very hot next year.
You just can't predict.
Right. Okay, good.
On the expenses side, there's positive numbers looking on the administration line where from '24's budget to '25 budget, you've kind of down almost $50,000. So what have you been able to do to drive savings on administration? That's a substantial part of that line.
So some of this legal expenses, which were, you know, one-time things. Great question.
Well, wasn't the one, also the volunteer firefighter incentive program was reduced by 15,000?
Yeah, but that was a, that was a forward-looking project. That would have been a reduction in administration.
That's okay. I mean, the challenge.
Whatever it is, you did a good deal with it. I think.
Graham, for the 2025 budget, you're looking at between your operating expenses and your net revenue and your township contributions for your, you're gonna have a deficit of $61,000 to $11,000 to move forward after your general reserve. Can you give us an idea, what kind of monies do you have in your general reserve fund at this time?
General reserve is, I should have written that down. I think about 770. And the reason we can afford, I hate to say this, the reason we can afford the 65 is because of the positive performance in our investments with the general reserve this year.
So that, yeah, 77,000, is that correct?
770. I didn't mention the exact numbers. Our apparatus fund is at 4.4 million. And the building reserve is at 3.3, about 3.1, 3.1.
What are your plans for the building? Are we able to do a?
So we've engaged, yeah, we've engaged an architect. I don't know if you're familiar with East Brady Line Fire Company project, but they did a substantial renovation to their building. It looks fantastic, but they got a lock for their money at that project. We've retained the same architect based on their experience in that kind of project. And the big push for the renovation, I think we're basically gonna leave the apparatus base alone, but we're gonna start implementing live-in programs and better sleeping quarters for employees and spaces that are more up-to-code compliant, help with some of the, you know, the cancer presumption stuff with cleaning gear and all that sort of thing.
And the live-in program we find is very instrumental, being able to attract and retain individuals to be able to.
And help manage our personnel costs because, you know, we need to, we need to keep.
Do you have any plans? What are your plans on doing that building renovation? Have you seen the?
Well, so we should be, we should have construction documents by, let's say, February or March.
Of next year?
Of next year. And the reason we're pushing hard is because if we do get the community funding from Congressman Cooliehand's office, there's a, that money is timed out and we have to spend it when we get it. So we have to be ready to shuffle that in for that project.
And that's the Park Avenue location or not the Boot Road location that you're looking to do that, to expand that, including the live-in now?
We will likely do the same thing at Boot Road or prior year, that's Park Avenue.
So as part of this building renovation plan, so are you gonna be looking for the municipalities to subsidize that initiative?
We might make a friendly request, but we are, we are building that in more budget at this point. We, we've done our concepts in terms of space planning. Now the architects will get back to us in about a week with approximate costs. We can start to value engineer things and see where we are and then we'll know if we have to reach out municipal.
Stay tuned.
I have a question before we move on to the next slide.
Okay, so the request, as, as Chris mentioned, is set forth in the contract. And according to the contract, and we recalculated our numbers based on calls for last year and West Oceans force the state standard 31%. And so the increase will be approximately 20, it's my favorite here, sorry. It's 28. Here we go, sorry. Increase to $342,874, which is an increase of $28,311 or 9% from last year.
What is the 50% reduction for the volunteer firefighter incentive program? What was that about?
So we had put together a plan to incentivize our volunteers to stay on station during critical periods like evenings, overnights, things like that. It's a fairly common practice in the fire service now. But, you know, it's an unfunded project. And in order to meet our targets for our municipal requests and to keep our deficit, we had to table that project. See if we can find money for it somewhere else.
Is that like gift cards or whatever?
It's a stipend. You get a certain amount of money for being at the firehouse for a four-hour shift or an eight-hour shift. Under Department of Labor guidelines, you can't pay them by the hour because they're volunteers, but you can give them a stipend or a incentive.
Do you estimate that given that you're basically eliminating that program, they impact your ability to be able to provide services for new attention?
It won't change anything. The advantage to doing that is you get out a little bit quicker. The staff are on, instead of responding from home, they're on station. So, you know, the end goal is to get out a little bit faster with the crew. So we are gonna apply for grants to see if we can find that program. You know, it's not off the table. We just haven't pulled it up, but.
And the capital reserve funding, you said you reduced that by $120,000 and I'm looking at the prior page there. And when I'm looking at the capital reserve funding for the building with $6,925 in the '24 budget, and now you're eliminating that for the 2025 budget.
Right.
I don't understand where the $120,000 comes from.
The $120 would have been a new initiative. We, a few years ago, we had been putting $120 into the building fund and we had to part that because.
Well, you haven't done it for a couple of years.
We haven't done it for a couple of years. And what that represents basically is if we, if we had it and we were going into this building project, that would have been used to, actually would have been capital, it would have been probably set aside for a mortgage payment.
But the actual reduction is, according to your sheet, there was $6,925 on the prior year.
Yeah. So there's essentially, I think we had to part it.
And then also you said you're reducing the municipal contribution request by 42%.
That would have been, if we had gone in, if we had added in that 62,000 we were taking out of our general reserve, that would have increased the municipal request 42%. If you haven't done that all. In order to get the municipal request down to a certain point.
But in reality, your increase for us is gonna be 9%.
Yes.
Any questions on this one slide? Any questions on this one? You okay with that? Okay. Next slide, I guess. Apparatus fleet?
So just, we had a lot of discussion about our apparatus fund. Just to give everybody an idea of the size of our fleet, the age of our apparatus. I think our average age of our apparatus is 11 years. What's similar, we're having trouble getting replacement ambulances. We've had two one-order now for two and a half years. Might get them next year sometime. We're running ambulances that have 120,000 miles on, 105,000 miles on. So, you know, we're spending a lot of money keeping them up and running. It's just, it's really tough to get replacements now. But, you know, our command vehicles at the bottom are starting to show some age. But like I said, we do a pretty good job of preventive maintenance and we spend about $115,000 a year on maintenance to maximize the uptime stuff.
Looks like the next two years, 2025 and 2026, if you really had the years, you're talking about three engines. We replace in 2026, the three ambulances.
Yeah.
Can be replaced in 2025 and 2026. So it's all happened, you know, in a short period of time.
Yeah, but, so we talked about apparatus funding at 4.4 million. That's, that's pretty well calculated to cover all of that and it forecasts out 20 years. You know, we'll go several years without, without purchasing anything. So that will build back up. And if we can maintain a healthy annual contribution and an average, you know, decent return on our investments. We see that as being sustainable. We did, as you see on there, we sold our rescue truck on October the 4th to a small fire company on the summer. That's amazing. And we got really good money for it. You know, we try to buy quality apparatus and, you know, it's reflected in the resale value. So, you know, the money, the proceeds from that went back into our apparatus reserve fund.
And then the brush 56, that's the size of that?
It's, it's fine.
Oh, it's still kicking?
Yeah, it's, it's a 1996.
Antique.
It runs fine. You know, we don't get a ton of rush buyers, so, you know, we're happy with it. I know a lot of people who want to buy it, but.
Okay, any other questions from the board relative to?
Just one, Tom, and I know you've probably heard me state this publicly before, but one of the areas that I would like to see in the future get more scrutiny is this area of the capital investment. And on the fire side, not the ambulance side, I understand the demand on that. We know the service levels are required. We know the number of calls are set. But on the fire side, equipment is really expensive. And I remember last year when we went through the contract establishment with Westchester April contributions that were required into that ongoing five-year contract. We just had a discussion here about, you know, the size of your capital apparatus repair. This seems to be, the coalition should really be looking. Could be more, I'll say the word, community, regional. Because for individual fire companies to have the capital expense of these equipment. When we're all, you know, there's a dividing line between who serves who in our, but township seems weird to me that it's not something that's looked at in a more holistic manner. And it's big dollars we're talking about. So I really encourage you, the coalition, to find a way to have a conversation around what is a better way to manage the capital assets of what the fire companies in the years ahead.
I'm not sure that we can do that, can we, Chris? From a technical standpoint and legal standpoint, I'm not sure that that's possible because they're separate entities.
I don't see why you can't.
Well, one issue, there are a couple of issues that I presume. Number one is kind of what Mr. Walsh alluded to. The boundaries for these service companies don't follow municipal boundary lines. So you have to take into account the service territory, which for Goshen is four municipalities. I believe there are seven that are part of the Westchester fire contract. And particularly in the case of Westchester, I believe the borough owns all the fire apparatus equipment.
And they're already merged this week.
There would probably need to be some kind of agreement, if there was some sort of asset between, say, Goshen and Westchester Fire Department. Steve, I'm gonna look, is that correct? Does the borough own all that equipment?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Big difference, yeah.
So that could create some problems. I'm not saying it's insurmountable. I'm just saying it could create some issues.
I hear barriers, but I want to look at forward solutions. I think there are always the change because we all know with a blank sheet of paper, it wouldn't be designed the way it is. So I just challenge everyone to think differently a little bit. It doesn't make sense to me. The amount of capital asset investment required in years ahead needs to be looked at in a different way than we've looked at it in the past, I think.
Well, just as long as life, we are looking at between the coalition about getting a blocking bid that would be utilized by all of the fire companies.
Exactly.
Like that?
Exactly. So that's the point, that we are moving in that direction and that's a good example.
Yeah, we are looking to use it for the police, municipalities, townships. And also, we're gonna be forming a subcommittee as part of the coalition, hopefully I get some people to sign up for it, to work out the logistics of that piece of equipment. It's a very good possibility. We will get through the $50,000 grant within the next four, four weeks. So the subcommittee will form, where is it housed, who's gonna use it, what equipment do we need? A lot of logistics associated with that piece of equipment, so.
Great, that'll be a test case. That'll be a test case and then we'll be able to move forward with other ideas, right?
And I'll let you know the outcomes, Sean.
Great.
Okay. Any other comments from the public or any comments from the public? Oh, go ahead. Yes, yeah, we're done. Trying to confuse me. Okay, any other, no public comments? Okay, one. Go ahead, Dr. White.
Do you still do fundraising in your supply hall in terms of breakfast and stuff like that?
Yes, we still, we have an occasional backdoor battle. And they give monthly breakfasts, September, October, November, January through May, which are well-attended.
And they're very good.
I don't know. But as part of our building renovation project, obviously it's, you know, one of the things we have to look at and consider is, you know, our, the ROI on, you know, the whole operation.
Also, do you find any of your equipment?
Currently, no. We just retired two low-interest loans through the state. It's 2% financing, so it's very favorable financing. We're allowed to finance two vehicles at a time. So in September, we just retired two 15-year loans. But generally, the cash purchases out of our apparatus reserve fund.
Marge?
Chris, did you receive ARCA funds or PIRS Act and what was the amount that you spent that year?
So we received ARCA money from Willis. So we received ARPA money from Williston in 2021. They had a lot of money, they divided it up between the fire companies. During COVID, we received two PPP loans converted grants. County had some, I think $50,000 for each fire company that we received. So, and then most of our COVID expenses were reimbursed through applications to feed.
Okay, thank you, Grant. Thank you for the presentation. And I assume we're going to take the same position we did with good fellowship on remaining somewhat, discuss it for the next meeting in November.
Thank you, Grant.
Thank you, Grant. Okay, now we are moving on to the next topic, which is nothing personal against pollution. A discussion regarding the government service center basin retrofit project outline and Westchester Township Pollution Reduction Plan. Brian, if you please, take the lead in this.
Good evening. So some background, your pollution reduction plan, which I'll be discussing in further detail later in my report, giving an update to where we stand with that, based upon our September approval, has a project in it for retrofitting the government service center basin along West Town Road. For a bit of background, this went back and forth for quite a while with the county to develop an agreement with the county for the basin project, since it is located on their property. That agreement was signed. We authorized after given pricing from HRG. And Carol Crowell was the low bidder for the project. They got the project, they did a floor design. We submitted that design to the county, who had a ECOM, their engineer reviewed it. Their engineer issued comments. We met with them in September. They were, comments were addressed, and they issued a letter last week. A ECOM did, saying that we've addressed all their comments, and they recommend the project move forward. So with that said, Crowell's near me, is currently working to finalize the bid documents and get them ready to go out to bid. So tonight, we want to talk about a couple of different things. The project itself, and also the bid and project schedule of how it's going to work, because this project has been allocated to be used as, with the ARPA funding. So in front of you, here is the floor plan set that was presented. First plan up is the existing conditions plan. One of the issues that we have is this inlet right here in the parking lot is actually set lower with the basin outlet structure, the emergency spillway. So if there's ever a large storm event or the outlet pipe clogs, the parking lot will flood before the basin can discharge. That was one thing that was discovered during the project. The, and that is shown in the profile here. You'll see the, here is, here is the inlet, and here's the spillway. Spillway is actually higher than the inlet by elevation. So for water to top spillway, the inlet is actually underwater, and the parking lot is underwater. The new retrofit will correct that. The proposal, this is the design of the basin. You'll see there's two entrances, two, two inflow pipes. And to make it easier to see, I will switch to the landscape plan, which is colorized, so it's easier to explain the design of the bottom of the basin. So you're magenta, two lines are gabian basket walls. This is what it looks like when it's built, this is what it looks like when it vegetates. That will vegetate and become a basin four bag, which will dissipate the water and slow it down. Water will then flow through the gabian wall, and these two meandering channels you see are going to be retrofitted with mended soils for infiltration. We also are proposing two stilling pools in the center of what is a flat basin for infiltration to allow the bottom, or to infiltrate into the bottom of the basin, or currently it just flows straight through. The third piece of the basin is, which is right here, this is the emergency spillway. We're going to actually retrofit the spillway and actually correct the elevation of where it's built and re-stabilize it. So this spillway is now lower than this inlet. And the last piece of this is we're putting in a new outlet structure to help control the basin flow, and that will be a new pipe. You'll see right here, this black line, which will be bored under, structural bored under the driveway. So added roof, that would not be cut or impacted to allow full access to the property. That was one of the things that county wanted to maintain, is full access at all times to the building. We can't close that right. Additionally, we're proposing plantings. And a lot of the comments from the county's engineer came upon the plantings and locations. That's been addressed. This is not the final landscape plan, the final landscape plan is currently being incorporated back from this into the plan set, because this is from the, this is not detailed for construction yet. That's what's happening right now, to finalize the set for construction.
And what's the fill to the bay? Is it going to be similar? We have on Concord Road with the flowers and wine manual inside the basin?
So inside the basin, there's multiple plantings. You see the circles you see are different types of water-tolerant trees and bushes. And then inside the actual channels, there's going to be another type of planting. And the third type of plant is going to be the basin grasses, which is the green area. So, and then there's a maintenance schedule that's outlined by, on the plan set, for how to maintain it, the township will be maintained above the basin. The, there is an agreement for cost sharing, it's in the agreement. We'll share the cost of the maintenance, but the maintenance falls on the township for the basin for retrofit.
And what for party that now?
Right now, the plan is not a third party do ourselves. It's knowing and some selective we, we, it's not.
And you think intense?
No. That's considered design. Our bidding schedule.
Just a couple of questions on the design, Brian.
Sure.
So is there a guarantee on the plantings from the contractor? Are we going to get a year or two's guarantee that the plantings will take? And we end up with failures that now we're responsible for correcting?
There, that'll be addressed in the bidding documents for the guarantee for the project. I don't know if it's going to be 12 or 18 months, but there's, there will be a guarantee in the bid documents that they have to make.
The guarantee period will be long enough to make sure that there is establishment of the intended design?
Yes.
Okay. And the second question is, the spillway, when does that discharge relative to the normal outfall? Looks like there are different locations.
Yes, this is the emergency spillway. So what the emergency spillway is designed for is if this outlet structure is ever clogged, this pipe fails, for whatever reason, water will spill here, and there's actually a swell that runs right along the edge here. It's an existing swell.
When is that going to?
It will carry water around and across the road. I believe it goes across the top of the road. Yes. And then it gets over into the wetlands, which are in here.
So that's an emergency situation?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's the original spillway from when the basin was designed for.
Yeah, there's no change to it.
It's just established in the correct relations of the function.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one question. Could you go back to that slide on the bidding and construction schedule?
I don't have that up yet. I don't have it as a slide. I haven't discussed it, I don't have it as a slide. So that's what I was going to get into, is discuss the bidding schedule. So. The current schedule is the project will be advertised based upon the approval tonight. The opposition advertisement board, the project will be advertised for bid on Monday, October 21st. It'll also be live on PennBiddle Monday, October 21st. Second advertising meeting November 4th. The pre-bid meeting is currently scheduled for Wednesday, November 6th. The bids are due to be issued on, to be submitted and opened on November the 20th. Given that date, the letter of recommendation would be submitted to township on Wednesday, November 27th. And then this would be on the agenda for your authorization on December 3rd. Once authorized, the contractor then have two weeks to return the documents to township, which would be December 19th. Once they return the 19th, then part of your motion to award would also be to authorize Chris Bayshore to sign all the documents on behalf of the township. And he can sign them when we see the 19th of the contract side this year.
So is the, is that the event that must occur in order for the ARPA funds to be considered contractually committed?
Yes.
To meet their ARP department's.
So.
December 19th.
That would, that's what now would be in the documents, to have them returned. That still gives us a buffer, the 19th to the 31st, if there's something missing or something off in the contract documents that we're working on the contractor. But it gives Chris the 12 days of time to sign the documents. He do not have to decide. Once they're authorized by you at your December 3rd meeting, the rest of it can be handled in the background between the contractor, Carol's here, and Chris.
The actual work itself in the field would be in the spring of '25?
Yes. And we're anticipating a 90-day contract with extensions if necessary for extension establishment. The actual construction will be completed in 90 days. And then guaranteed for, to get the full establishment, I guess. So that's.
Or they have to post a bond for that?
Yes.
Most contractors do performance bond?
So there's maintenance guarantee on the.
Oh, that.
The maintenance guarantee would just be part of the contract.
I mean, usually it's a contract term that they guarantee. It's usually not, it's not bonded to it, it's contractual obligation.
So our, our contract, usually generally, they stipulate they get paid minus 18 inch. Routine to be held for the, to be what was held for the, for the.
Well, that's how it would.
It would work more like a warrant, like a warranty, like if it fails within this. It would be a contract like a warranty. If fails within a set period of time, they would have to come back and practice it.
But it's not as good as a bond, is it?
I mean.
You generally don't get bonds on these types of projects.
But this is what, you know, if it fails, and the contract's no longer in business, it's on us to fix it, because we're the ones with the maintenance agreement, the county, right?
Yeah, 50%. We do the work and pay those costs, except for.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? If not, is there any public comment?
Let's get to quick questions. Is the premise for this project, that it's not a capacity issue, but that the spillway is, is too high relative to the parking lot?
Purpose for this project is it is currently a just dry detention basin.
Right.
Water comes in, water goes out, doesn't retain any water. We're retrofitting it to get credits for our MS4 program. So we have MS4 credits for treatment, and they're proposing to get an extended detention credit, bio-swell credit by running the two swells, they can be considered bio-swells, and also infiltration credit. So we're, it's approximately, I'll have, I have.
No, no, I get the concept. It, why isn't, would this not be a county issue, a county project? Or you want to do this because you want to get the credits?
We want to do it because we want to get the credits. Because it's in our MS4 area. The county doesn't actually have an MS4 drainage area like we do, that we have to provide for. So this is in our area. The drainage area that this basin serves is 15.3 acres. And of that, 13, over 13 acres of it drains this as a perpless surface.
Any other public comments, questions? Margie?
Thank you for bearing with me here, because I might take some time. Has Carol given you an estimate of what they think this is going to cost?
They used a clear estimate back at the beginning of the project, but they haven't given us an estimate since.
Do I recall that was roughly $800,000?
No, I think it was around $500,000.
I think it was close to $500,000, was the initial estimate.
Things have changed now, as a result of some of the findings, engineering findings.
Oh, yeah, they always get the process, yeah.
You don't know.
It's a really big process.
Great.
We don't know.
It's a big, big platform, too.
And, okay, I'm going to jump around here. So the estimates for the sediment reduction that's required by DEP, that was all determined by a scientific model, correct?
That was determined by a scientific model as presented. So how a PRP project works is the plan has a estimated reduction based upon the drainage area to the basin. That's in the plan as currently as a project. The actual reduction is not realized with DEP until the final project close-up report is prepared by Carol, based upon an asphalt survey of the conditions that the basin is constructed to. And they may be able to get more credit out of their design than what was initially thought about in contemplating the PRP. So.
I'm going to jump, jump back to our road superintendent. A couple of weeks ago, you asked him about the street sweeper, and how many tons we're collecting from that. And he said a lot more than I think was initially estimated. Is there a way we can get additional credit for the tonnage of debris that's being swept up from the street sweeper?
I am accounting for the sweet sweeper, the street sweeper for 2024. In the MS4 report, which was going later in my presentation, we've, we collected, we reduced our sediment load by 25,000 pounds.
That's based on actual or?
That is based upon the actual amount of tonnage collected with the percentage of total suspended solids reduction that DEP will lie to take credit for. So DEP says 9% deduction of suspended solids based upon the street sweep.
And this project is estimated to reduce 16,000 pounds?
15 to 20 in that range, yes.
Okay. Where are we? Because I'm jumping all over here, but I have a lot of information. North Hills, where are we on that project?
We're getting the easement signed by the property owners.
Okay. Back in 2022, I have the meeting minutes here. I had to ask, Margie Swart asked if this project may be incorporated into the PRP. And Mr. Craig clarified that it was too late to include it, but could likely credit towards the PRP once completed. My thought here is, because I'd like to kind of show that, I think this is, quite frankly, just a ridiculous project and a waste of money, because we're just looking for things and making things up, to substitute out the North Hills project, which is needed for this basin.
The North Hills project, phase one of the North Hills project does not include, at this time, any reduction of sediment. Phase one. When North Hills is completed with all the phases, there may be, we may be able to get some credit for it. But this time, we don't have a project on the books in North Hills that we can apply, that we can apply. If the phase one design comes out and it's built up, we can figure we can get credit for it. We have to amend our PRP with the DEP and go through that whole process to add it to the PRP.
Okay.
So there's a process with DEP to get it accepted as a project.
Correct. And part of the plan clearly says the township recognizes their ability to review and revise their short-term sediment reduction strategy, and may elect to do so in accordance with PA DEP regulations. So just to say, plans change. We, we could change projects and still get credit elsewhere. Bicking Basin is the stormwater basin, I believe you were referring to, off a Concord Road that was completed in 2009, I think. A township basin. I, I can see the township undertaking that same type of project on this pro, on this property for $60,000 or $70,000, because I believe that's all it costs on the Bicking Basin one. Just a thought. The, I zoomed in, I like to read the fine print, and this was off the plans, I do believe. Operation and maintenance requirements for the retrofit bio-retention basins shall continue to include quarterly remove weeds and invasive species from the basin. Think if you go over to IDAWIL and look at those retrofits, it's all overgrown with weeds. So we're going to need to be quarterly maintenance there. Monthly, got to remove accumulated sediment and debris. Mulch as necessary, twice a year. Monthly, you got to go over there and ensure outlet structures remain unobstructed and free of debris. There's a couple other items on here. So I think you're underestimating the amount of time required and township staff to maintain this retrofit. Our own stormwater maintenance ordinance says that first and foremost, convey concentrated flows by means of innovative pervious vegetated channels rather than pipe systems. Are those S's? There's going to be, is that eight-inch HDPE pipe underneath?
Yes.
So we're going from right now, 100% vegetated, the way it was designed by engineers 20, 25 years ago. Now we're going to put the water through a pipe, which is total, is complete opposite of what our stormwater ordinance says we should do first. Just wanted to point that out. Just wanted to point that out. Again, select and design best management practices to give first priority to non-structural and vegetated landscape-based BMPs. Second priority to surface BMPs. Third priority to subsurface structural BMPs, which is now what we're doing. We're going to what we want to do first to making it, you know. It's just, again, backwards. And again, please, I'm not attacking anyone personally, but government sometimes just gets a bad rap and sometimes justify, please, so for, I mean, I just see this as a government wasteful spend in the largest magnitude.
If you could wrap it up a little bit, Margie, just so we can give other people the opportunity.
Yes, I will.
I appreciate it.
And I actually went out to the site today. I asked a local resident engineer, I said, would you please meet me out at that basement basin? I took some of these plans, stood there, and I said, you know, I'm going to oppose this and maybe I'm missing something. And I hope you can tell me that, Margie, it makes sense, you know, this is a good idea. But you'll hear the, the opinion I, I got. So, you know, I think I'm reasonable. I'm not an expert in the field, although I've been studying this since 2015. I do want to make one last comment. Before I was, received a letter in 2015 to be on this stormwater advisory committee, I stood in the back of my newly purchased home on open space with Richard Craig, our previous engineer. We have a nice, nice pond on open space in our community. And we were talking about emergency spillway that the developer hadn't done. Anyway, he expressed to me how lucky I was to live in West Goshen Township where the taxes were low and there were over 200 stormwater basins in West Goshen Township. 205, I believe, he said, at the time, 205 or 207. He said, the township only owes, owns five of them. And we were so smart and so forward-thinking because it would take so much time and so much money to maintain these stormwater basins. And so this was a bragging right of the township that we only owned five of these basins and we'd only be responsible for maintaining those. So now all of a sudden, I've watched the township over the last couple of years, running around the township, you know, getting the wetlands behind Aldi dedicated to us so we could spend a bunch of money on that. And now I understand that we can't spend any money and you use that. Here we are, running to the county saying, you know, hey, can we use your, your stormwater basin for this project? So again, MS4 is municipal stormwater system and it includes only municipal-owned structures and features. And this is not owned by the township. And I don't think it, and I don't think we should be spending our money. Grant money is our money. I'm just so opposed to this and I just hope you reconsider. Thank you for allowing me the time.
Thank you, Margie. Is there any other comments, Mr. Gold? If you could try to keep it to two or three minutes, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
It's getting long. I am the engineer who met with Margie and I've designed basins. I think she's very smart and the things that she brought up, I 100% agree with. Something that maybe she wanted to mention but didn't, but the ARPA, I believe we have $2 million approximately.
What's left is $900,000.
But, but, but we were granted $2 million. The county was granted 100, over $100 million. And we are going out of our township and doing work on county property. So now I'm going to put my budget watchdogs hat on and say, after listening to people struggle with budgets this year and oncoming years, a financial service company reported about two weeks ago that there is $1 trillion left in ARP that is not dedicated yet nationwide. If we somehow figure out how to spend that $1 trillion nationwide, we are going to go through another round of inflation. And this is what's getting us in trouble. This is a real budget problem for all of us, the inflation. My food's gone up 100%. My dog food's gone up 150%. So it's a real struggle. It's real. Not spending in ARP money is not the worst thing that can happen to this country. And we're seeing to be rushing this and, and it's just not good. A couple other key points. The maintenance cost. The maintenance cost for this appears to be now all on West Goshen. And I believe Margie's right. I believe we're way underestimating what it's going to take to take care of this basin. This must be the largest basin that we'll have to take care of. And because it's front and center in the county services building, I think it needs to be taken care of aesthetically as well. And I think we're biting off more than we, than we should on this project. And I agree with her, there's others options for the MS4. And I don't think we can overlook the fact that the MS4 is exactly what you said it is. And this is not qualifying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Any other public comment? Okay, no other comment. Let's get back to the board and what the board wants to do here, if you'd like to vote tonight on this or if you'd like to hold up. We do have a timeframe, Mr. Shid, with this, as Brian indicated.
There's no action.
No, there's no action that has to be taken.
It's just a discussion, the project's allocated in the budget, so it's authorized to go out with that.
Okay. Okay, moving on to.
You have to approve authorizing it to a bid, right?
No, they don't. They approved it as part of the budget. It's approved, it's in the 2024 budget, it's a project that's allocated. They don't have to authorize it, it's about the bid, it's the same thing as our ROPA program. No different than that.
Okay, let's move on to, I'm sorry, me. Yes.
I have to admit, I understood very little of what was said. But the one thing I did hear is that this seems to, the choice to do this with the pipe seems to be the third choice of things that the Goshen, that the township would do. So why, why is that chosen rather than the first choice of that point?
Brian, the answer that.
I can explain where the idea of pipe comes from. So in the shaded areas of, that look like the S shape, which are our bio swells. One of the requirements from the DEP for a bio swell is to provide, it's called an underdrain. Underdrain in this instance is set beneath the amended soils. The amended soils is this hatch pattern on highway. Below that, the bottom is a check, is a stone trench with a perforated pipe. Those pipes are six or eight inches, depending on the area. Most likely they're going to be six the whole way around because of the flow. They're there to allow the water to filter through the amended soils. And then the underdrain allows it to pass out of the, through the thing. So the, the idea of the project is that the amended soils will uptake water and then there's also going to be some infiltration on each side. If there's a high-level event where the water is more than what these soils can handle, that's when it filters through and goes out the pipe. This is all designed based upon DEP design protocol that they require. Therefore, there is a DEP BMP that's called a bio swell. And they give you a very high removal rate of suspended solids. About 80% is what they give you in their calculated thing. So the length of the swell with, there's a couple of different things in the calculation for the reduction. The length of the swell and the drainage area to it is what considers, is what DEP looks at for the bio swell calculation. That may not have been considered in the retrofit in the actual PRP, which I'll talk about later tonight in my, in my report. So we're going to have two different bio swells that, once constructed and accepted by the DEP, there's a calculation that's presented in the final report about what we get for sediment reduction for our MS4. This basin is in our MS4 area. The MS4 does not look at if, if the property is owned by us or by the county. It's looked at based upon our population and the census and the map. This falls within our area. As I said, this has a 15-acre drainage area associated with, that is within our MS4 boundary. So this is a viable project by DEP for our MS4.
Can I make just one last comment with you, please?
Oh, one nice quick comment.
I just want to say, as a starting point from the pollution reduction plan, it says it is assumed that all existing basins proposed to be retrofitted are performing below their design intent and are hydraulically short-circuited. So we just started with, we're just going to assume that it's not, it's performing below. Has anyone gone out there and said, you know what, this is, this is, this is fine?
It's a hydraulics short circuit means that water flows in and water flows straight through the bait, through the outfall. There's no, there's no attenuation of the flow to, to, to slow the flow down going through the basin. That is what it considers that a hydraulic short circuit. This basin exhibit, has exhibited, there's two channels that are carved and eroded out from each inflow directly to the outfall. So the water comes in and goes straight through it. You've, you've even commented, Margie, that you've been there and saw it can dry because the water's flowing straight through it. This is to slow the water down, hold it, and get credit for reducing sediment water. The way it's functioning now, we have zero credit for this basin.
Quick comment, Mr. Gold, and then we have.
That's the, that's how the DEP looks at it.
Yes. So thank you for that explanation, Brian. So this reminds me of a problem that white property had. So the oil from the cars in the parking lot, is that going to go through this pipe and right out?
No.
Does everyone understand that the water is not entering a pipe at the beginning and flowing through a pipe through this thing? Do you understand that is not what is happening here? It flows to the surface and goes through soil and vegetation before it reaches the pipe. If it's a gentle rain, it's, this pipe's not going to receive anything. It's going to be retained by these new soils that have been put in this project.
But you're filtering it out at the same time.
You're filtering that out and you're hopeful that those soils are no longer, as Brian just said, just washing right through this basin that doesn't infiltrate anything and goes straight in the creek wherever that outfall goes.
So now we're contaminating the environment, basically, with all the sediment that's in there right now without treating it.
I disagree with a lot of the comments that were made. Some seem valid, but you, you repeat, we're not always, we're 50% on the maintenance, not all of it. The maintenance does sound a little like it's something to do, but it's not, it's not that much. When this is established, it'll be fine.
The, the agreement signed with the county provides for a 50% reimbursement from the county to the township for the maintenance costs. That is in the sign agreement between county commissioners and the township. These. This black line you see here and this black angled line you see here, that's the forbath. That area is going to be created. One of the comments from the, that the county made was they suggested we look at armoring the bottom and making the bottom hard so it's easier to scoop out the sediment. The idea is the sediment will be in these two four-bays and not spread out through the basin. Because the four-bays are function to knock the sediment out of the water. The rest of it is for water quality, a lot of water to seep into the ground or filter before it gets out. Okay.
One more quick question, then we have to move on.
Just an aside, we lived through the 908 stormwater project in, in West Goshen, in Pine Valley Circle.
Okay.
Right down from our house is a cul-de-sac and that's where the basin is. Now, what, that was completed about two, two and a half years ago, time flies. They came in with landscaping, they put all kinds of plants in, they put trees in. And we thought that they were pretty parky and it looked beautiful. And I said to the landscaper, I said, what is all this? I said, because this is all, the water's all going to come up and these plants are all going to die. And he said, I don't know, the township wants to put them, we're putting them in. And they spent days putting these plants in. And it did look nice until the following year. And now it's a, it's an completely overgrown mess. I mean, there's, you can't even look down in there. It has not been looked at or touched or maintained in any way, shape or form. And that's a very small basin compared to what we're talking about over here. So that's my concern. I mean, I didn't live with that. We walked that cul-de-sac every single day with our dog. So I've seen it go from lovely to a mess. And, but no one really sees it. It's kind of disappeared, it's out the end of the cul-de-sac, so whatever.
Who owns the basin? Who owns it?
I don't know.
I, that project was done before I started here.
Is it township?
Well, it's not. It's in our MS4, but I don't know what, what the meaning.
Yeah, it's probably private property. And this, we, township can't touch private property.
I feel like we took that over so we could do it. I think they needed it to us.
Could we look into that, Brian, and get back to you on that?
I just, you know, we have just mentioned it amongst ourselves and we, we walked it like, what gives? And why would they put so much time and effort and money into planting all of this stuff and then to let it all back?
And not have any maintenance done.
And there are no maintenance.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into that and see who owns it and.
That's a fair question.
Yeah, it's a fair question. So we'll, thank you for that comment. We'll look into that and get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to number, I think number seven on the agenda, which is discussion and possible approval of the closure of West Goshen Township offices on Election Day, which would be November 5th. And before the board of supervisors this evening, it's consideration to close the West Goshen Township offices for the upcoming general election on November 5th as the township serves as a polling site and turnout is anticipated to be high for this election. Closing makes logistical sense. Additionally, I, Chris had surveyed the municipalities where the municipal building serves as a polling location. And according to Chris, 67% of the respondents indicated that they will have their offices closed. So at this point, would we like to have a discussion regarding that topic?
Well, I, I think it's a good idea to close the office on Election Day. We provide, you know, obviously the, the access is needed to the general public. We expect to be a lot of people coming, parking in front of everyone. We want to make sure that plenty of parking available for people. And I would support closing the office for that day.
I agree to. It's going to be, it's going to be a month here in the morning and probably throughout the day, it's going to be a lot of people coming to. You know, the township employees will be taking up the parking spaces for these folks to be coming.
Which may discourage some people from wanting to come in if they can't find a parking spot, which is not what we want.
I will get it explained.
Yeah, okay. We have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second motion?
Will soon.
Any further discussion with the board on this proposed motion? Okay, any public comments or questions? Margie?
Can the employees park back where the police officers park?
I still have to park police vehicles, I still have to park police, just personal vehicles. It just, it's not logistical. I talked to our facility superintendent, he said it is a nightmare.
And we can't chance somebody parking in an emergency place correctly. And we have to get out for an emergency.
I just think it's a great opportunity, but since some, many citizens don't come to this building, but to vote and to have the opportunity, I mean, everybody has offices, right? They vote in here, so none of our employees work here, they're all behind doors.
It's not a question about them working, it's a question about being able to park them. That's the ultimate question, being able to park their vehicles, being able to make sure that they are safe, being able to make sure they can get to those offices. That's the ultimate question.
And not taxing the neighbors by parking in their neighborhood or in front of driveways or various other police activity that may have to occur as a result of.
So is this just the admin employees or is this park and rec? Is this?
This is everybody. This is everybody.
Any other public comments?
And it's K-Town, just supposed to be K-Town?
Yes, it will be compensated. They will be compensated.
Okay, no more public comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, no further discussion, motion passes by 4-0. Okay. Moving on to number eight on the agenda, which would be discussion and possible authorization to advertise the following land use ordinance amendments. Which would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to fences and walls and amendment to the subdivision and land development ordinance pertaining to sidewalks and street standards. Kristen, would you like to take this on?
Sure. We've worked with Shelby and Brian on the first one. I think the board's talked about this a couple of different times at their meetings and we have made amendments to address the different, I think as applications have come in for fences and walls, we've realized there's some issues and some things that we'd like actually, in some ways, to make it easier for people to install fences. And so the first one is just, you know, referencing or changing the zoning provisions with regard to when and where you're allowed to erect a fence and a wall. That's, that's the first one. The second one was something that came about, you know, if I was not at the first meeting when this came about, but the first discussion was that the board wanted to make sidewalks the mandatory obligation in the subdivision land development ordinance and specifically call it out for new developments. You know, that we've had many applicants or different property owners come in and request that. request that sidewalks be installed. Um, you are permitted under the state law to require developers who submit subdivision and land development applications to require them to put sidewalks in. Um, so that's, that was the primary purpose for this ordinance, and as with any time that we're looking at an ordinance, um, where that currently would be contained is in with this appendix one, which really didn't make a lot of sense. So, what we did was suggest that appendix one be deleted, and there were other things in appendix one that then had to be within the body of the ordinance, so that was specifications for streets, curves, and storm drains. Um, Brian worked with the road superintendent to make sure that we are specifically listing out what the specifications are, that they're currently telling developers to use. A lot of them are based on the appropriate PennDOT specifications, so we're just making it, in my opinion, more user-friendly for where a developer who is submitting a land development application can find these specific standards. So, that's what really, this is a cleanup ordinance, I would say, as far as the other sections. The sidewalk provision is a new section, um, and then also, one of, some of the other things, the driveway, uh, the minimum paved pathway with the driveway we talked about. And the other one, the last one was, I guess, Brian, you wanted to make sure that you had sufficient notice before you're, you're asked to do an inspection of the development. So, those are the main topics in this particular ordinance.
Okay, let's take them separately. Uh, let's start with the fence ordinance, um, and discussion regarding that, and I have actually one thing relative to that, uh, from a legal perspective, change on page two, which would be section two, uh, three, uh, five, I'm sorry, five. Um, in that, it says, I'd like to add, no fence shall impede or change slash alter the natural flow existing of water in any water course, because I think I'm gonna be careful there, that you don't wanna, not only impede the natural flow, but you don't wanna change, alter the flow either, by any construction that's being done there.
If we, well, we have to send this back to the county planning. If we're gonna make changes, we're gonna send it back to the county planning.
I think it's important enough, because you...
That's fine, I'm just smart about, yeah.
I appreciate that input, but I think it's important enough that we don't wanna change or alter.
Can you explain a little bit more what you're trying to do here? Shall impede the natural flow? What, what are you, what are you trying to add?
Well, it's already there. No fence shall impede. I said, or change slash alter the natural flow, existing flow of water.
Well, it isn't changing or altering, you're saying it was impeding. Like, to me, impede it is gonna change and alter it, it's the same word.
Well, to me, impede is different than changing a natural flow.
But if you impede it, it's changing natural flow, is what I'm saying. But if, by the act of impeding it, then you're probably gonna change or alter it.
It's clear enough, it's intention to a developer, what you can and can't do with respect to a fence and with respect to water course. I don't think we need to go through the side of the game to, uh, to me is implied, or we could, same effect as the wood.
Okay, everybody else feel the same way? Okay. Any other comments regarding fences?
Well, just a clarification, so, and the fences and walls, uh, ordinance, uh, changes, probably restrictions in the area from the street line and the building setback. So, you can do anything beyond the building setback, as far as putting a fence.
Right.
So, you can put up a six-foot bat, or whatever, if it's close to your house.
If it'd be considered a structure, it would fall under definite, whatever structure's allowed.
So, this fence, which only deals with that area from the street line, which is the whiteaway line? Is that the same thing as the...
The street line is the definition, yeah. I, I don't know if anyone's right with that. I think there's two definitions.
What, what, is the street line the same thing as a whiteaway line? That's true.
She has a definition.
Um, yes, a street line is defined as a redaway line, and we define redaway.
Okay. Any other comments regarding the fence, fence and walls section?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to authorize or, uh, authorize the change to the zoning ordinance section pertaining to fences and walls.
Second? Any second?
This is also...
Authorize and advertise, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay, um, need second? Motion? Any further discussion on the board on this motion? Okay, any public comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, no further discussion, motion passes four zero. Okay, let's move on to the sidewalks and streets standards, uh, discussion. Uh, I actually had, uh, one thing in section 72, 24, two sidewalks. Says a sidewalk, a sidewalk shall be required for all subdivisions and land developments. Um, two things regarding that, that's, uh, section A. Um, question, if existing sidewalks, if, if there's existing sidewalks, can we put in there that the new ones must be connected if possible? So, if there's already...
I'm not understanding what you mean.
Well, if there's already a sidewalk nearby.
If it's not, if it's not on the applicant's property, you can't, you can't legally allow them to go onto another property. So, you can only deal with the property that's a subject of the application. So, if the subject of the application has an existing sidewalk, and it doesn't meet these specifications, you could make them bring them up to these specifications. You can't make them go onto somebody else's private property to connect.
Which is not what I was referring to. If it's on, if it's already on their property...
You can make them bring them up to these specifications.
We can, based on the existing language?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we don't have to add that?
No.
Okay. Then the second thing, um, do we also wanna add, variances can be applied for, which is similar to what we did.
No, this is in your subdivision land development ordinance, so you're allowed to have waivers. That's a, that's a waiver section that stands alone in the SADO.
Okay.
Yep.
Would still be allowed?
Yes.
A whole separate section of the discussion.
Okay.
We discussed that with the planning commission, and that was terrifying.
Okay, good. Um, that's all I had. Anybody else have any other comments, questions regarding sidewalks?
I just have a question, clarification on page four of the SADO. It's, um, section four, what we're doing, adding a maximum paved width of 16 feet when it meets the road surface. Uh, and this next question, set part of the sentence, can you explain to me what this means? And shall be located a minimum distance of five feet from the lot line. That's an existing SADO.
Yes, it is. It'll be five feet, so, turn off the street, one of your driveway, and drive it back towards your house.
Right.
The portion of your driveway, once you leave the rightaway, goes back to your house, can be no closer than five feet on the edge of your driveway to your neighbor's property, to property of your neighbor. That allows a vegetative stretch, a vegetative stretch.
From the neighbor's driveway, yes.
Okay. Anybody like to make, anybody like to make note?
I'll make a motion to authorize for advertisement, the proposed changes to SADO with respect to sidewalks and street standards.
To advertise it.
To advertise it. Any, okay, second. Um, any further discussion on the board on this motion? Okay, any public comments or questions?
Is this, when instead of, you're, you're just cleaning up the ordinance, you're taking the amendments and moving it from here to there.
If you look, if you look up on the board, this is appendix one, from 1990.
Yeah, we're just looking, this, we're looking.
So, we've taken the 1990 specifications, updated them to current PennDOT standards, and brought them from an appendix into the body of the ordinance.
That's kinda what we're understanding.
But sidewalks is now got the word showered, whereas before it was May. So, now instead of asking and them saying no, they have to ask us to say no for sidewalks.
Is that along, uh, township roads and state roads, or just...
Yes, depends on where the property is, but yes.
Okay, uh, Steve, do you have a question?
Yeah, we did incorporate the county recommendations, correct?
Uh, yes, we, we did. Uh, tell me where, county's?
Sorry, what was the question?
We incorporated the county's recommendations, and we read them.
Uh, so, one of the county recommendations was to talk about a...
Talk about future amendments to deal with trail standards, so that's something...
Trail standards up to the future, and they also talked about verge.
Verge, yeah.
That's a future thing, too.
And that was something, if we were to address that now, this delays the process for two to six more months. This process, this, that's something we can discuss for future with the verge. What a verge is, is the strip. We look at strips if they're, if it's a good idea, but it's not a good idea to require, in my opinion, across strips everywhere, because, for example, if somebody buys your property, Stephen, your neighbor's property, who's gonna buy them, and there's, you guys don't have a sidewalk, now you got a verge strip. If the properties next to you have a sidewalk without a verge strip, now you got a sidewalk that jogs back to your property and back out, because the verge is, is the strip between the sidewalk and the curb. And some places, they're good, and some places are not. I don't wanna force it on people on a property if the property side don't have one.
Okay, so...
By putting the ordinance, it's a, it's a requirement, and we wanna make sure, if we address it, it's addressed where it makes sense, not just a blanket statement of how they said. They said they consider incorporating it, and we will consider it down the road when we revise the SADO after we do, um, incorporate, uh, the SADO with the zoning ordinance update.
Okay, so, just to understand, your three properties, one, the center is up for development, you're not requiring that to verge it out into the street?
No, the verge is if, think of it as a snow strip. You run a street, you have the curb line, and you have the grass strip, and then you have the sidewalk behind it. That verge is the, is the, is the appropriate term for the strip of land between the curb line and where the actual walking surface is. It can be gravel, it can be pavers, it can be trees, it can be decorative, it can be street furniture, it can be grass. One term for it is a snow strip. If the two sides don't have snow strips, and you develop, require you to put a snow strip, then now the sidewalk's gonna come back into the property, and it's just not gonna make sense, so...
It's almost like better for vacant undeveloped land versus a build-out community like West Goshen.
It's also, verge is better for somewhere like you have the burrow, where you've been built to, you've built up to the front, and you get the whole furnitures, and you have that space, sidewalk along the building front now. When you're in residences, a lot of times you don't have the space, because you gotta stay in the rightaway.
Yeah, and also, Steve, this is something that can be discussed and determined during the land development process, going forward with planning committee.
Yes. The strip can be something as a request during the design, the sidewalk and the curb line, just, you're going to do it, and then we can work out the details of it through the process.
And putting curbs in going forward is also gonna help our, uh, street sweeper and all that, right? I mean, us to recapture some of this...
It's gonna help, it's gonna, there, there's benefits to curbs for stormwater, because it keeps the water in the road and it gets rid of, there's a reason why curbs are beneficial when you get into dense, more densely developed. While curbs aren't as necessary, but curbs are, there is pedestrian safety and also stormwater, with a curb line.
Okay, um, no more public comments? Will not take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, no further discussion, motion passes four zero. Uh, moving on to agenda item number nine, which is us, uh, discussion and possible awarding, uh, the following contracts for West Goshen Township Waste Water Treatment Plant. Um, this evening, uh, looking to award the following bids for the West Goshen Township Waste Water Treatment Plant for de-watered sludge hauling and polyaluminum chloride. These bids were opened on October 2nd, 2024. Note that our wastewater superintendent, Mike Mafa, also solicited bids for magnetite. Unfortunately, no bids were received. Pursuant to the PA second-class Township Code, the township will need to rebid this item. Mr. Mafa, who's here tonight, if anybody has any questions, is currently preparing a new bid for this item. Regarding the bids for the items outlined, we recommend awarding these bids as follows: De-watering sludge hauling, Charles Polanski Disposal Company, one-year contact for $525 per dumpster. This represents a 5.6% decrease from the 2024 contract. And polyaluminum chloride, Univar Solutions Incorporated, one-year contact, contract for 3.82 cents per gallon. This represents a 3.5 increase from the 24 contract. Um, there is, um, there is tabulations for the items. According to Mr. Mafa, we do not recommend awarding option two for the de-watering sludge, uh, bid, which is attached to the document. The bid amount represents a 9.5% increase compared to the one-year contract price per load, as well as a 3.4% increase over the current per-load rate. Additionally, we do not believe that the per-load amount would increase annually to the three-year contract bid amount over the next three years, which would result in the township losing money. Um, any, so, would you like to add anything, um, to that, Mike?
No, zero questions, everybody has their...
Okay. Uh, so, we have discussion with the board?
So, like, on, on, just on the magnetite, you don't have any problem getting it at the moment, though? You have a current supplier, so you just don't have a, a, a bid.
We do not have that, six or seven...
Not even provided.
...options.
Okay, so, you may end up with a sole source again, right, basically?
Yes.
I know the magnetite went up a lot last year. Do you anticipate that this year, or next year, I should say?
No, I really don't.
No?
They were comfortable, I think they knew that nobody was gonna bid it. Uh, they just didn't, it would've been higher, I think, had they bid.
Okay.
I think there's comfortable suppliers that will be having it.
So, under the second-class Township Code, assuming, like, it's no bids, but she's hoping to have back, I think, for the November 7th, am I correct, Mike?
It's opening on October 5th.
Perfect. Uh, then, once we've done that, then the township can negotiate with whichever vendor we change.
Okay, that's all.
Whoever might's comfortable with this.
Okay.
On the, uh, de-watered sludge, do we use Blazensky now?
No, we do not.
Do you use, uh...
Waste Management?
Yes, sorry.
So, Blazensky's got a bad reputation on residential waste collection?
I believe that's a different...
Different, um...
Different now, for department?
That's AJ Blazensky.
We do the Blazensky first.
Okay.
We've used them for many, many years, and they're never been any...
Okay, good.
And Republic don't bid on this ever? Have you ever had Republic bid on this?
I don't think so.
Because when we, that's how, when we like Republics, in terms of service level, anyway, so...
We had an interest from other outfits, and these are the ones we got.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion with the board?
Did you have, uh, up to this point, did you have a multi-year contract, or was it year-by-year?
It's, it's always been year-by-year.
Any other topic discussion with this? Okay, anybody want to make...
Okay, Steve, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to award the, the award of sludge handling to Charles Polansky Disposal Company for a one-year contract of $525 per dumpster, and the polyaluminum chloride to Univar Solutions Inc., and one-year contract of $3.82 per gallon, Charles said.
Okay, any further discussion with the board? If not, is there any public comments or questions regarding this topic? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, no further discuss, discussion, motion passes four zero. Uh, moving on to item number 10, which is possible approval of a letter of support for a local share account grant application for the Westchester Fire Department. Um, is consideration to authorize the issuance of a letter of support for a local share account grant application being submitted by Westchester Borough. Specifically, the application seeks funding to acquire a Pierce Enforcer Pumper, which would replace an existing piece of fire apparatus. As part of their application, Westchester Borough is seeking letters of support from the partner municipalities, um, the possibility of submitting grant applications to fund capital purchases was discussed during the negotiations for the current service contract. Okay, regarding that, any further discussion with the board on that topic? Okay, regarding that, any further discussion with the board on that topic?
Steve, maybe you can, could set some light, what is a Pierce enforcer pump? What is it?
Uh, it's basically a new furniture, um, made out of Wisconsin. About $1.3 million. Five years ago, they were $650,000.
I have a question, I don't think we'll know the answer to it, though, Chris. Is, if they, if they are successful in receiving a grant, would this have any impact on our contributions during this five-day contract?
I don't have the answer to that question.
I think I know the answer, but it's okay.
I, I think the answer is potentially no, but, uh.
It's worth a try, by the way.
I don't ask that question.
But this was, as Vice Chair noted, this was something during the negotiation process within your contract, a possibility that we discussed.
Don't let her claim grants.
And they're seeking letters of support from all the municipalities in the, uh, in the regional.
So I make a motion to approve the letter of support for the LSAD grant application.
Second, any further discussion? Any public comments or questions relative to this topic? Okay, uh, will not vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, no further discussion, motion passes, uh, vote of four zero. Uh, moving on to item number 11, which is a discussion regarding the possible submission of a multimodal transportation fund grant application to the PA Department of Transportation for Montgomery Avenue. Chris, would you like to comment on this?
Yes, my Vice Chair. Uh, so before the board this evening is consideration to submit a multimodal transportation fund grant application to the PA Department of Transportation to address flooding on Montgomery Avenue. Uh, the township submitted a similar application for this project to the Department of Community and Economic Development earlier this year. Previous discussions regarding submitting to both programs for this project sought to attain funding from both programs or to minimize the cash outlet from the township, i.e., um, the DCD match requirement. However, that was prior to us learning about the ability to apply for a waiver for the match requirement through T, through DCD, which the township subsequently did. As such, the application was amended to request the full cost of the project. Um, the multimodal transportation fund program is currently open and the application deadline is November 5th. Um, as they prepared the DCD application, I asked Chris Peterson to provide an estimate on the cost to prepare an application for this program and provided that to the board this evening. Um, if the board does desire to proceed forward with an application to this program, the attached resolution should be adopted, um, to include with the application. I did review the documentation that was provided on the program and there does not appear to be a match waiver as there was with the DCD program, which is kind of interesting considering, I think, the program's a review by the same exact agency, uh, being the Commonwealth Financing Authority. So if the board does want to proceed forward with it, there's a 30% match requirement, which would put the grant application request at $752,413, with the township match being about $322,000.
Okay, uh, any further discussion with the board or questions, comments?
Well, I have a question, what's the likelihood of getting a grant from the DCD versus Penn Dye?
Based on the application that Carol Engineering put together, I think extremely high. I'm not normally confident on grant applications, but I think they did a really good job on that application.
Well, I mean, what is the necessity of putting in a second application?
Because you don't get it.
Yeah, you're basically, that's, that's it. That's basically your, it's an insurance policy we call.
I think it's more than insurance policy, I mean, my understanding is these grants are competitive.
Yes.
We're really, and believe me, I really think we have a great application. I think, you know, it's high, it's a good possibility we'll get it, but a better possibility of getting something is to apply for all grants. We've talked about that as a strategy before. I think as insu, if you want to call it insurance, by call it increasing our likelihood of getting something, I think the $3,000 to get it submitted is, is a good use of the money and that we should apply for this program as well. Because at least from my understanding, most people look to apply for both sets of funding and then because it's the CFA, they may split the funding between two or whatever else. But it gives us, it just gives us a higher likelihood.
That they could split, they give us a reward both, but split the costs between the two?
I don't know, I've never seen that happen before. When we did one of these, before I got up there, Malver had done two multimodal transportation fund grants for an improvement project on King, at the intersection of King Street and Warren Avenue. And that was to offset the match requirement for DCD. They got DCD first and then applied for Penn Dye. We don't have that in this case. I, it increases your likelihood of securing some kind of funding. That's why I call, I call it an insurance policy because you're covering yourself in the event one isn't successful.
Yeah, sure, it's to me like the, yeah, I mean, this is about increasing our likelihood of getting something. I mean, you could have an oversubscribed, uh, whatever the first one was we applied for. And we get, and we choose the max, instead of the million dollars we've asked for, they could only give us five, 600,000, but then we could still get maybe another hundred, 200,000 out of the second one. So that's what I meant by splitting it, you just don't know as to what level of award you're going to get potentially. Because we don't know how oversubscribed these applications could be.
I haven't seen something like that happen, but I'm not saying it's not a possibility.
Yeah. So I, my position, I don't know what goes with the board, so my position would be to spend the money and get, get grant application for this other program as well.
I agree with that.
I agree.
John and Nate? Okay, if you're.
So if the board wishes to proceed forward, I recommend the motion be to approve the proposal for Carol Engineering for $3,000 and to adopt resolution number 28-2024.
Would somebody like to make that motion?
I agree with that.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Um, any public comment or, um, questions? No, okay, um, uh, we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, no further discussion, motion passes by four zero. Okay, number 11, let's move on to number 12, which would be discussion and possible appointment of Michael Bonner as a regular voting member on the zoning hearing board.
Uh, my Chair, there's something that came about late Friday that I just want to bring to the board's attention.
Sure, please.
Um, so as noted in my memo before the board, I had asked both of the alternate members regarding their interest in this position. Um, I sent that email on October 1st, I believe it was, to both of them. Uh, I heard back from Mr. Bonner as noted, uh, first, I heard back from, uh, Mr. Sheik, the other alternate member, who was also interested 10 days later. So I don't know how the board wishes to proceed with this.
Okay, uh, would you like to hold off the vote or?
How are we going to make a determination at any point?
Yeah.
We have two other members, both of whom want to serve as fully appointed.
And we have one position open.
Has one person been on as an alternate longer?
Uh, Mr. Sheik has been on longer.
By how much longer?
For at least a year, I'd say.
How much, that much longer?
I would turn, not to put her on the spot, but I would turn to, I would look at our zoning officer, she attends these meetings, is there any distinction between the two?
I will say that yes, uh, remember, Mr. Sheik has been on longer and has participated in hearings since my tenure. Um, Mr. Bonner had come on during my tenure. And although, um, not been a voting member, has attended every meeting and follow-up meeting, even when they're only voting, um, sitting in a member of the, uh, sitting as a member of the audience. Um, so that, that would be my input there. Um, I don't know how the board wants to go.
I think, uh, after Sheik also has a graduate degree from Westchester University in planning, I believe.
I, I would suggest we table it until we have a full board present, let's see how much people are in this one. I mean, it's not, we have one board, we have one zoning hearing board beginning this month, right?
We do, um, I'm unsure.
It's going to be one in November or not?
Uh, this time, uh, there's not one that I see coming through, but I didn't see this one.
And even if there was, one of the owners can serve as well.
Correct, they can see one of the alternates in there.
So I would suggest we table it as a full, called a full board present.
Maybe we could hear a presentation from both of them, then both can, uh, tell us what, why they could be the best two to serve.
Yeah, I'd like that.
I'll leave that up to you guys.
Yeah, I'd like.
Maybe that's too much, I don't know, I mean, they've both been on the board, they're both anticipating, you know.
Having to make a decision.
Just have to make a decision, so I'd just rather make the decision with the full board, yeah.
Okay. Uh, all right, moving on to reports for September, which would be item number 13 on the agenda, since we are going to leave that item on the table for next time. And Chris, you're more than welcome to leave if you'd like, or you can stay.
Thank you, I will.
Okay. Um, if we can hear from, uh, police report for, um, for this month?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, to pay your, the police department, uh, report for September 24th, 2024, responded to 2263 calls for service, 49 alarms to improve for valid, eight three auto accidents, 16 which were retorable, and drove 22,981 miles. Selecting course continuous around the township and some of those roads include, or areas include, uh, Rosary Lane, Oxford Road, Brooklyn Street, South Blue Street, South Five Points Road, Telesa Road, South High Street, Airport Road, and Christine Lane. Uh, in addition to the monthly training, career development that we conduct across the, the, each month with the officers, uh, just some of the training that we have sent officers to, others, I want to point out a few of them. Uh, we've sent two detectives to self-help user data as far as, uh, become users of the self-help software. Uh, one officer we sent to, one sergeant we sent to Hyatt National Division. Uh, we sent one officer to the drugs at the point shooting. Uh, one officer, the first responder suicide from access supposedly. One officer to advanced roadside, air traffic enforcement array ride, talks about. Uh, one officer to, uh, field training officer program. Uh, one officer standardized explosive ride testing to be a certified explosive tester. Uh, several officers attended a school shooting debrief, which was the Broward County, uh, Martin Stone double shooting. Uh, several officers attended that, that debrief. And we sent, uh, two officers to organize retail tests supposedly. Uh, one announcement pointed to make, uh, we're conducting our annual search and trauma treatment this month. Uh, on Fridays, 6:30 to 8:30 at Burnell, 9:15 for a road, to Burnell Medical Center.
Um, I just have one thing, I noticed, uh, as far as monthly alarm activations, city electric supply had three consecutive days, 9:28, 9:30, the alarms. Is it, is it a malfunction, is it something?
I would say so, because they're all, they're all about.
Okay, do you see with the, um, the penalties associated with these alarms, that they've decreased any? Because we've increased the penalties associated with it, the mounts.
Not as, not as whole, we, you know, we talked earlier, we see the, uh, the regularity that changed or the free flyers have changed a little bit, but the alarms, the alarms consistent.
Okay.
This time last month and this time last year.
Okay.
So the number of alarms are pretty much remaining the same.
Yeah.
But maybe not from the same entities. So there is some change occurring here. The effect of us raising of the fee for fire alarms has had some of that. Does that be a fair statement to say?
I think it's a fair statement because they said the, the free flyers have changed, now we're just getting different people.
Yeah.
So they have to go through the, the loading process.
Right.
Well, I know, no, nobody's here from Westchester Fire Department, but I noticed, I haven't signed, but, um, they had 39 alarms at Cambridge Hall alone. So far, it's, it's crazy.
Your chair, you do have someone for questions.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay, Steve, yeah.
I'm sorry, missed a question.
Uh, now I just noticed on the Westchester Fire Department report, which is part of this, they had 39 alarms at Cambridge Hall alone.
They've got a lot of free flyers.
Uh, since January.
Yeah.
So far, and that we're not done with the year yet.
Well, I think the, when we talk about the meeting, is that what's happened is the alarms are located around kitchens, some people are cooking, some, maybe they go to bed, and all of a sudden, one goes off. I mean, this is, and they're building a residence, so.
Oh, they are.
So this is another problem, is that somehow we have to hold the corporation accountable so that they move the alarm, okay, we'll put in the heat alarm. And they don't seem to be doing that. I think that you really do have to discussions with, uh, the chief and one of the, because everybody's kind of tired of these. And we've got one on South High Street, the parking lot, which is on the, the borough. We go there all the time. And you think they would fix that one? I mean, this, it's, some of these are really frustrating and I would, Rosary, I would.
We could talk this with Steve Pelmer also, also you get a crying will syndrome starts to kick in. You know, the, the firefighter is volunteer, they don't take it, and that call isn't serious. And Steve himself, he can say when it comes in, the Cambridge patrol, he just blinds himself away out of the, you know, out of the fire. He's not going on that one.
Well, that would actually be Mark Scanlon, we should be having a meeting with him, I think. Um, whoever else he wants included in that meeting is fine, but John, maybe, oh, go ahead, set up a meeting with, if you want to.
Yeah, I think that'd be a way to, you could set up a meeting with, uh, the fire chief of Westchester Fire Department and Cambridge Patrol Management.
Yeah.
And talk about, you know.
My experience has passed across a lot of residents. Uh.
Is, is Cambridge Hill University property or is it not a private, that's what I'm.
It's private.
Okay, I'll set that up with Cambridge Hall, I think it would be advantageous to have them there also, an owner from Cambridge and also, um, the chief.
Everything's going to be more, more of a.
Who?
The chief is.
Yeah, absolutely, okay. Um, any questions?
Yeah, one other question for Captain Midio. Um, the school shooting debrief that was attended by, uh, several officers, was there a, was there a, something new in terms of lesson learned? Or did something come out of that that has any impact on the protocols and approaches that we would use?
Yeah, so, uh, as, as you see with the list, um, I listed, uh, all supervisors to attend that, called the school, school resource officers. And there's, if like, like any of these other ones, are lessons learned? Uh, unfortunately, we knew, you know, just from what you heard, the, you know, the public reporting and the, the media. Um, there was a, it was, it wasn't given by Broward County, it was given by, uh, a city just outside Broward County. It's within Broward County, but Broward County was the, the, uh, main jurisdiction. So it was, uh, it was an interesting overview of, of the police department assisted with Broward County. I don't, you know, you saw that in, in, in the, it took a lot of heat for that. Uh, and it was, uh, it was a lesson learned of, of, uh, what their protocols were at the time and protocols that they changed since, not just, not just the which, which were constructed, as far as which way the doors opened up, which meant the locker, but, uh, as far as, uh, the response by law was, okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions from the board, first?
Yeah, just, uh, could you, we discussed this today at the board, I saw the team or something. Can you give us, Russ, the board, an update on the AMAT-E and how that's, uh, performing? I believe it's now put into service, can you tell us a little bit about?
Yes, sir.
How much do you utilize and, and, you know, we're pleased you're out.
Yeah, certainly, so the, the AMAT-E, the fully electric car is assigned to, uh, the school resource officer, one of the school resource officers, so if you're not, to a leasing unit. Uh, what we promoted and, uh, we just got put in service about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago. Uh, what we're trying to do is, when that officer's not working, we're, we're trying to, uh, have the other patrol officers using the patrol function, like the normal function, the school resource officers, so, you know, a little bit of a different function. Uh, so we're, we're having the officers commit or, excuse me, submit a, uh, five, six question survey at the end as far as starting miles, not just starting miles, any miles on the odometer, but the starting miles and any miles of what, I mean, hour they're left, you know, until, until zero, um, and a few. So, uh, the data's very minimal right now, so the, the data sample is, is minimal, but, you know, this is what we're looking at to see what we, what the future of, of this concept of the vehicle is. The one, the one, uh, common complaint right now, it's, it's, it's a small vehicle, it's not that they're used to, they're not used to the, the SUVs before explorers, certainly not an explorer, certainly not an SUV, but, uh, you know, we're getting that now.
Are you seeing any issues arising with not having sufficient time to recharge the vehicle for the next day's usage?
Not yet, you know, we're looking, like I said, the, uh, it's been a small sample of, uh, but most of the surveys has been filled out completely by Officer Myers, which is the assigned officer in the vehicle. There's only been two instances where a patrol officer has, is usually in a full patrol fashion, so, uh, not yet. But, you know, we'll, we'll start to see that in the board data.
Any other questions? I, I was going to use, finish off the board first, if the board had any questions, okay, Margie.
I think Liberty did discuss, um, the last, tonight, I pulled in in the parking lot in a meeting two weeks ago when I was leaving, um, SWAT trucks or what do I see, um, in the building from the face building?
What specifically was your question, what?
The trucks that are camouflaged, not camouflage color, they're like dark green.
Green, yeah, 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 so, uh, two, two of them, the two green trucks you said?
Yeah.
They're part of the regional SWAT team, or the emergency response team, so there was several municipalities that are part of the regional, uh, emergency response team. Uh, they have several vehicles, two of which are out here, that's what's.
Are they, are they doing training exercises or?
If you're seeing them come and go, uh, they're, you know, trading, well, what time of the day was that?
Uh, tonight, going in at, uh, six, 5:45.
Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday's a, a training day, right? There was no, there was no person.
Yeah, I'm curious, how, how many of our officers, are there, are there certain officers?
So we have seven officers, uh, SWAT operators, uh, on the team. Uh, like I said, there's, uh, Willstown Township, Westchester University, Westchester Borough, uh, Westtown Township, or, I'm sorry, we go, P D, West White, then. So we have seven of them. There's about 35 who are on the operation.
So something like that, in Florida or a school shooting, that, that team would be called and instructed?
That team would be called, but, you know, in a school shooting, it's over by the time it's swam.
Correct. I'm curious, thank you.
Any other questions for Captain Midio? Okay, thank you very much for your court. Okay, let's move on to the item number 14, which is Board of Supervisors' announcements, and Nate, let's start with you.
Sorry, uh, 9/21, I attended the Westchester 25th Township Building Adversary. On the 23rd, uh, attended the, uh, bootag, uh, meeting, which is the Borough Township University Officials Group meeting. On the 24th, met with Street Supervisor Martin Faralomi along with John Hellman. 9/26, I was not able to, uh, attend the historic commission meeting, but from the minutes, uh, they are working on the historic commission ordinance specifically dealing with the demolition by neglect clauses. Also, they're working on oral histories, which have been submitted to Cantler for uploading on the township website upon approval. That's it.
Okay, Sean?
Yeah, so just one thing for tonight, uh, earlier today, John and myself attended the monthly, uh, project meeting with Terra Solar related to the solar system design build for, for the building C project. Uh, the project will be submitting, um, I hope it's by the end of this week, if not early next week, uh, to PCO for the interconnection, um, of this new project with their system. PCO takes about 45 to 60 days to review and, uh, I expect, we expect approval. Uh, would be for net metering. Uh, would be for net metering, app, application overall, uh, so it would be for the full size of what we originally intended, without this Plan B connection over to the admin building, which would be good, again, assuming that PICO approves the application. Uh, there's some project details about, uh, whether this connect switch would be located for, uh, fire access, and there's some other discussions related to the schedule. Uh, but overall, the, the detailed design is complete, and the joint, the wait period for the PICO approval, Keystone will be reviewing the, uh, projects submitted for all the materials that are required, um, to be approved. And then, once we get PICO approval, TerraSol will order all the equipment, and construction schedule would start April first after the winter season, and we expect beneficial production within eight weeks after that, so, looking good.
Okay, John, you have anything?
Sure. Uh, Saturday, September the twenty-first, I also attended the West Coast Township Brooklyn House, I just want to compliment the staff, I think they did a great job of welcoming the residents, and showing those folks who came, you know, what local government does, and I think everybody had a good time. On Monday the twenty-third, I attended the BUTAG meeting, that Nate and I mentioned, and there we had a chance to meet with Westchester University staff, and also the new president there, Lori Burbanowski. And we talked about plans for Westchester University for the future, uh, and for future development, as well as student housing, what they had in mind. They should be coming up with a master plan, they say, by the end of this year, and they didn't tell on the staff for some time, but, uh, they're claiming that they should be able to roll this thing out and present it to our township here, as well as the borough by the end of the year. On Tuesday, September the twenty-fourth, Nate and I met with Mark Collin, the street superintendent, he discussed, among other things, cars and projects, including the recent acquisition of the walkway between Cooper Smith Park and the suburban Village neighborhood. On Wednesday the tw- uh, uh, this, yeah, October second, attended the Chitwick County Planning Commission Fall Planning Forum. Topics included presentations on EV charging stations, planning, and grant funding, uh, and on Thursday, October the tenth, attended the Land Planning Commission meeting to discuss, uh, have continued discussion of the zoning ordinance revisions with the Gilmore Association. On Friday, October the eleventh, attended the Goshen Fire Open House, and there I witnessed a demonstration of a carpool involved in flames, and the response of the Goshen Fire, of equipment and personnel to extinguish it, it's pretty impressive. Now, Tuesday, October the fifteenth, today, attended the Solar Project Monthly Update Meeting that Sean just described. Also, we had a police liaison meeting with, uh, with Tina, Mr. Reese, and myself, and, and the lieutenant, or Captain D'Amelio, so that includes my.
You're now lieutenant. Okay, I just have a few announcements, um, we had two executive sessions, uh, on September twentieth, twenty twenty-four, on performance objectives with Township Manager. And on October first, Matters of Litigation, Woodworth versus West Coast Township and Personnel. And so my announcements were nine twenty-one, um, the anniversary of the West Coast Township was excellent, the ice cream was outstanding. It was outstanding, now I have to go, now I have to go there. Um, on October second, I attended, um, an expo at the Senior Center, where I handed out, um, a little card for them to sign up for Blackboard Connect in Chesko, and also answered numerous questions that they had regarding the township. So it was a great session. On the fifth of October, I attended Coffee with a Cop at the Irritation Exchange, which was very successful, and I got to actually sit in the Mach-E, um, and was very impressed by it. Uh, on the fifteenth of October, I met with the police, um, and then I also had a meeting with finances, I said, on the watch, all the sales spreadsheet, went in depth about, um, some of the, um, numbers there. And then on the seventeenth, we're gonna have our next fire in EMS Coalition, um, which I'm looking forward to. And that's it for the announcements. So moving on to Township Manager's announcements, fifteen on the agenda, Chris, if you'd like to.
Hi, this is Madam Vice Chair, so a few announcements, uh, Township's monthly newsletter will go out, it's actually probably going to be pushed into next week. Mr. Laird is working on an article regarding Mr. Corvo, so he probably won't be able to submit it until the end of this week, so that'll probably be pushed into next week. Uh, the township offices will be closed on Veterans Day, Veterans Day on November eleventh, uh, but there will be no change to trash and recycling collection. Uh, as we discussed earlier, there is a vacancy on the zoning hearing board, um, that will be considered at a future meeting. In addition to that vacancy, there is a vacancy for an alternate member on the Planning Commission, however, there was a applicant for that. That was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting on October eighth, and that will be brought before the board for consideration at the November seventh meeting. And in addition, there is a vacancy on the Historic Commission. Um, I did note, I do note that we do have a number of terms coming up at the end of twenty twenty-four for consideration for twenty twenty-five. I reached out to the volunteer members with their expiring terms, and started to hear back from some regarding their interest in continuing to serve. Our equipment that was authorized for sale on October first has been listed on the missive bid. The bidding began on October tenth, and the auction will close on October thirty-first, and we have public inspections scheduled for October twenty-second, and October twenty-ninth municipal complex. And the waiting bidders will be brought back before the board on November seventh for final award. Um, I do not have any update on the Township's multimodal transportation fund grant application with D C D. And we will, we will begin preparing the application to PENDOT that's due on November fifth. Um, our local share grant application, we were hopeful that we would hear announcing on those awards in September, as was originally thought, however, those have been pushed, and we're hoping that they announce those awards, um, at the Commonwealth Financing Authorities Meeting in November. I did hear from Senator Comita's office regarding the two applications that were submitted, I spoke with Michael Harbinger, Chief of Staff. He did indicate to me that there are limited resources with the round that's being considered right now, um, and that there are a number of projects funded for funding. I did review the projects with him and provided him with history and supporting documentation, um, so that Senator Comita can adequately advocate for the project, for those projects, along with the other ones in our district. On September twenty-third, I participated in a virtual meeting with representatives from SEPTA on upcoming changes for the ninety-two bus. I'll note a couple of those changes, uh, the ninety-two bus route is being converted to an on-demand system that's being designed to respond in thirty minutes. Um, they are going to update the SEPTA app that will create booking capabilities for this new system. It will be a seven-day per week service, um, and they are trying to improve flexibility and access, as well as multimodal connections. Um, they are working to develop a specific on-demand app, as well as being able to make bookings through SEPTA app and the online desktop application. They will be installing new signage applications, and virtual stops will be used for booking, and that they're looking to have the stop spacing about a quarter mile apart between, uh, between locations near streetlights. Um, they're conducting field review of the stop locations, and plan to do community engagement this fall. Um, but I, since this meeting on September twenty-third, I have not received any notifications about any, uh, public meetings regarding these changes. And they plan to go into effect sometime in June, July of twenty twenty-five, but there's, there can be no change to the pricing structure, this will be the same cost as it is for a bus, and riders can use the exact same SEPTA program that are currently in place. There, it sounds like this is something that they are doing with a lot of their routes that have a, um, what are called like a smaller ridership, like a lower ridership, so this is, and it's to make them more competitive with things like Uber and stuff.
Look, it's a little muddled.
Exactly. And it's gonna, the bus is gonna show up when you want it to, and it'll take you where it is on the ramp. That's what, that's the way it was described to me.
That's good.
Um, the township, as the board will recall, we did apply for funding through the PICO EV Smart Program rebate earlier this year for the EV infrastructure project that was done, actually, we applied, we secured the funding in the fall of twenty twenty-three. Those funds were received in September, the amount was sixty thousand dollars, and that offset the cost for the project that was completed earlier this year.
What was, what was the budget amount for that infrastructure, do you recall?
I don't remember the actual, the budget amount, the actual amount that was paid out over the course of twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four was about a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. So the net cost of the township over the course of the entire project was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and four, nine hundred dollars and forty cents. And that included all engineering and construction costs.
Yeah, I think we came way under budget on this thing.
Oh, it was significantly less than originally anticipated, um, and then the sixty thousand dollars from PICO reduced it further.
Okay.
Um, we did send, we sent notifications on September twenty-fourth to businesses that were, that will be subject to the provisions for the polystyrene prohibition. Uh, that will go into effect on March ninth, there were, I believe, I was very conservative in who I sent them to, so if there was even a question in my mind, I included them on the list. So there were about sixty-two notifications at my house. And I did include Chester County Hospital on there, and I did, I included the grocery stores for good measure as well.
I'd like to recognize, I think, I guess it was Dorothy who did the fly, that was excellent communication. Um, I think it was very good, I saw it on the website, Chris. And, uh, you recommended, or suggested alternatives that were, were in there, included Charlie's comment from earlier around, things that were PFAS free. That was good, it was very well done.
Uh, Dorothy had done the notification for the, um, plastic bag and straw bins, and when that, when this ordinance was adopted, I reached out there and asked her to do one for this, for this guy right now.
Any, uh, feedback?
No. We had three that were returned as undeliverable, and we were able to find new addresses and something like that. Um, uh, as previously discussed, the land planning committee met on October tenth to continue discussion on the comprehensive reparation of the Township zoning ordinance. The focus on the last meeting was really about districts and uses, and looking at, looking at how we can make adjustments to the zoning ordinance related to districts. I was impressed that we have twenty-nine zoning districts, and I was impressed that Gilmore was able to identify about ten, and we were able to shorten them down to. And then they identified uses of ten.
Twenty-nine down ten, not twenty-nine down nine.
Well, technically, what they presented was nine, but Brian had a good idea from earlier that they didn't include, which was related to zoning for government institutional uses. So they're gonna update the information they provided to incorporate that. Um, but the one thing that Doug Stewart asked was kind of like a tree that sort of shows where they were, and how they got to like the new districts. So they're gonna update the information to kind of show a pathway for how they got, how they determined where to put them in the future.
Was, did we keep overlay districts?
No.
How, how, what is the resolution for like the PUC overlay, where you've got residential neighborhood, industrial, commercial, all of, as the underlying is happening?
The interesting thing though, about the PUC is that I think in the final version, mo, nearly all the properties that are in that district are university owned. I know, I think there's a couple that aren't on Carter Drive, but most of them are university owned, so we're gonna have, we're gonna have Gilmore look at that as its own district. And I have the final version that shows all the properties that were included, because Shelby and I actually recently got this question related to a residential property, and asking if they were in the PUC, and we pulled the final adopting document, and the residential properties were not. I know there were some in an initial version.
There were like four different PUC districts, though.
But none of, we couldn't find anything on the final version that included like the single residential home or something like that. So we, so we talked about taking that away from an overlay and just making it its own zoning issue.
That'd be great.
Like, the only overlays we'll really have are like flood hazard, are flood hazard overlays, which we have to have, um, I think that was pretty much it. Um, and then the last couple of things I'll note on there, I'll note are the West Coast Community Park improvements. We had our reconstruction meeting today with the contractor, and they are targeted, they've submitted their construction documents, and they are targeting a start date on that project of October twenty-eighth. Uh, that they're probably gonna get about ninety percent of the weight done this year, and then have to finish up in twenty twenty-five after the winter, just because of somebody that's particularly related to the basketball court.
So they, they can do the servicing, resursing, whatever, I forget what the full bid is for the reconstruction, other than they're gonna get, be able to do the servicing, they think that this would all went to.
Not, not all of it, a good chunk of it, but not all of it.
So it would be out of service then?
Yes.
Hopefully, till the spring?
Yes. And we picked the October twenty-eighth start date, so that there isn't construction during the Harvest Festival on October twenty-seventh. And then with the North Hill stormwater improvements, we received easements from the Township Solicitors Office, all the changes were made to them that were suggested by Brian and Chris Peterson. Uh, we distributed them to the property owners, we've had, we've met with one property owner to sign up on their reason, we're making arrangements with the other property owners.
Well, I believe, yes, that's from the board at the next meeting, or the second meeting.
As of right now, probably the second meeting in November, unless I can line them up for the next two weeks.
About three weeks before the next meeting, so.
If I can, I will.
Any issues, any problems?
There's, I won't name any names, there's one that's kind of being a little, I'll call it, how would you, how would you characterize it, Brian, a stickler, so to speak?
They're concerned about impacts to their property.
That would be accurate.
Okay. I, the, the issue here for me is I like it's quite a bid this year, and I'm trying for potential contracts, so, November seventh, I'd be.
I don't, even if we haven't even ever said, I don't know if we'll have the drawings completed and the documents ready to bid, because current and current area is on hold for moving forward with the project until we have all the sign. Five is a hand from all the parks, and there are one park supply assigned.
Okay, definitely.
I didn't wanna have.
No, no, I totally agree, I don't have to, I don't have to waste it.
And just lastly, um, with our fall, our Park and Recreation Department's Fall Movie Series will conclude this Saturday, October nineteenth, at Community Park. Uh, the showing of the movie, Piff. Um, a new thing for this year for Halloween, they are partnering with the, uh, Westchester Film Festival uh, for a series of short thriller films that'll be held at Community Park on October twenty-sixth. And the Harvest Festival will be October twenty-seventh, from two to four P M, held at Community Park. And our next yard waste collection day will be Saturday, November sixteen. Those are all my announcements.
And I can read.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, the Parkway, the proposed Parkway shop we're gonna be developing, while, right now, they're going through a highway occupancy permit process with PENDOT, can you tell us, do you think you're up with that?
Uh, they submitted a traffic impact study, it's been reviewed by PENDOT, they just issued comments on Friday, uh, we received those, uh, we received those on Friday. Um, and our traffic consultant, Chris Williams from Bowman, has issued comments, and those were provided to the applicant today, and to PENDOT on Friday.
Yeah, they haven't.
They haven't submitted any design plans.
There hasn't been an application for an H R P submitted to PENDOT yet, they're still working on the traffic study. It's gonna become the basis of the scoping for the H R P, for the traffic.
I think PENDOT had about, our letter, I think, was four pages, I think.
PENDOT's was five.
Yeah, PENDOT's was five, that's what I'm wrong.
So they, PENDOT did submit a queue, or comments reviewing the, the T I A? Yes, yes, they issued. Um, there is, I was, I, I'll say I was impressed with PENDOT's comments, they heard us.
I was pleasantly surprised, they took, they took our concerns into great consideration.
So talking of hearings, have, have the folks we reached out to who were active, parties or participants in the additional hearing classes, have any of those residents submitted information that we can provide to our traffic engine? And, uh, maybe follow up, if it's important, continue to receive their public input.
One has, and provided that information to Mr. Williams, and he, um, he provided that to PENDOT, we got two comments from members of the Planning Commission, who provided that as well.
I think there's gonna be other residents submitting comments as well. Do you have a deadline on when comments should be submitted?
No. Again, there's, there's two.
The sooner the better, yes, but there has not been, the process is, the applicant has to have their traffic impact study approved by PENDOT. That becomes the basis of how they then have to look at configuring the intersection, configuring the timing, what the lights, what the strength, all that. The basis, all that starts with the traffic during the T I A, and traffic impact assessment. PENDOT heard our, heard our concerns that we presented for the township, and they incorporate a lot of that into the comment that they sent back to the applicant.
Yeah, I, I, I feel what Brian said, I was very impressed with PENDOT's comments.
We don't know what the PENDOT design is gonna look like yet, if there's gonna be any changes to the ramp, what the light time is gonna be, what the light configuration is gonna be, what the turn lanes are gonna look like, that is still all being. The warrants for the turn lanes and the lights, all that, all come out of what is in the traffic study. PENDOT said, yes, we approve the traffic study, then that becomes the basis document for how they have to prepare the documents on how, over the change in the section. They've adopted that. They've adopted that.
Is it possible that the developer may have to do another traffic impact analysis?
Oh, they have to revise it. Yeah.
So they will have to revise that.
Yes, there's five pieces of comments.
But they had to address.
Yes.
Well, I think, the point I, I think we should continue to ask residents to provide input like Travis and all these others who have.
Travis did.
He was the one who did?
He was the one.
Mr. Crambleton as well. They've already sent the kind of.
We had other participants who had different issues than Travis did relative to their access to their property.
Spread the word. Spread the word.
I think we sent them, we sent them that email. It's been, I think that was on October fourth. Probably two weeks follow up.
Maybe a week or two is followed again by the other one.
Yeah, like you said, it's sooner the better.
Give them a deadline maybe too, just so they can follow.
And also, planning commission members also submitted.
They did.
Yeah, we had two. We got, as I said, from Steve and one other member.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, any other questions for Brian, um, for Chris? It's getting late.
Can I get the comment?
Yes.
Um, it's my understanding that Walmart doesn't buy the land anymore? So when they get to move in to Parkway Center, does that mean the township or the school system doesn't get any transfer tax?
Well, if they don't sell the property, the answer will be no transfer tax. But the build, the improvements that are made to the property will be assessed at a different tax rate. The owner of the property will have to pay taxes on the new improved version of the property.
Okay, um, let's move on to number, item number sixteen, Township Engineer Stormwater Announcements and Woodlands and Greystone update. Brian?
Give me a second. My website crashed.
Just making sure you didn't fall asleep.
So Woodlands and Greystone update, I have Woodlands up here as you see on the picture. In front of you is the one. Phase six was to be extending Coltrane and Bernstein and Armstrong and the Loop. That has been completed. The roadwork is done. There's still a lot of heavy, there's several topsoil and soil piles they were moving. I was up today to look at it. That area is done. Same thing with this area of phase six. That area is currently being worked on. There's houses being, receiving permits for those houses. So phase six is well underway. So there will be moving forward with that. Phase six, there's no more phases to come in front of you. That's the first update for, for Greystone. Second update is the phase one open space and trails punch list. I issued a punch list. It was approximately twelve to fourteen items a couple of weeks ago. I was notified by the developer that they addressed my comments. I will be verifying that next week. Additionally, through that, through that, I also have to go through with Chris, with the solicitor, we have to go through the conditional use, the modified conditional use, the preliminary plan review application and the weather that modified conditional use conditions to make sure all the items in the open space and trails that are required in those items have been addressed by the developer as part of this before I bring to you a report that says open space is where to go. So I'm working through that. I can't tell you date wise, but I will know within a week. But it's being, if they've addressed my, my latest punch list for the trails. We did issue last week comments back to the developer regarding the as-built plans and the trails that are incomplete. So they got a comment letter that was worked on by Carol. I made some comments that they addressed, incorporated to their letter. And that was sent back to Doug last week for the open space plans. So they're working on that. So there's, pieces are moving. I just can't give you a date when pieces were going to all be, the puzzles are going to come together. That is in process. Additionally, I received a request yesterday from the developer to look at the Phillips Drive, which is a twin private road and the phase one singles, which are this portion of Seeger, this portion of Suzza. For doing a punch list for the base paving, we're looking to top eight of those roads. That cycle walk discussion for next Thursday afternoon with Ryan and Hall there, contractor, and Carol and myself will be, we have to look at the roads. Let's see if they can repair anything before we release them to pave those three call signs. That's my update for the Woodlands.
But those roads ultimately going to be township roads?
These two are. Suzza and Seeger will be Phillips State's private. Phillips is in the twins, the twins and towns, which are not widening to meet our requirements. So as part of the plan approval, all roads that the developer shows to build at a lesser width will stay private, but we don't need a minimum width requirement.
But you still get to approve the condition of the roads before they pave it?
Because they have, that's in their performance bond to pave it. So I make sure the base is done, they pave it. The difference is there'll be a maintenance bond in the township for when they dedicate Seeger Lane. There'll be no maintenance from them for Phillips because it's private.
Yep.
And if they're private, who class them?
H O I. Yeah, the H O I currently class them now, they're like, there's. So my second part for it is the stormwater announcement. So we've been discussing the P R P plan. First part of the P R P is M S four requires our permit to be renewed. Our permit was approved. It became effective on September first. As part of our permit, we're also required to submit an annual report. The annual report was submitted on September twenty-eighth, which, which met the deadline September thirty-first. Four is about nine hundred pages this year. In front of you is our current, um, existing P R P plan listing out the projects. Excuse me. And in our current P R P based upon the waste allocations and everything else with the township, we're required to reduce our set of reduction through in our M S four air by three hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four pounds per year. In front of you is the chart as submitted, which is the primary and the chart which was the secondary if primaries failed. We talked about this a couple of months ago, where we're at. Ottawa Wild was built. Sewer treatment plant buffer was built. The Pine Valley extension bases were built. Basin Road, we had to cross off the list because of wetlands impacts. Hagerty, we chose not to pursue because of wetlands and private properties. So in our primary, we went from having four hundred and ten thousand pounds per year on the books to having two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. We currently have built on the books fourteen thousand pounds. Additionally, West Town Way, which was the Barker Park stream bank, has been crossed off the list.
Is the Goose Creek one, is that Montgomery Avenue?
Goose Creek is behind Aldi.
Oh, okay, that one.
We'll talk about that one here. Give me, Goose Creek is what, is our project behind Aldi.
Okay, what about the Montgomery Avenue? Is that something?
Montgomery Avenue will not give us any credit. Montgomery Avenue is to allow more water to pass under the road for flooding conditions.
What's the status of Carol's restoration plan for the, for the project on Warren Road, Basin Road for the Township Pollution Reduction Plan? Is that figuring?
Can we get, I have, I have more. So the Basin Road project we're talking about that we, I received these plans today from Carol and Jerry as a preliminary plan. This is the existing conditions plan. Through this plan, this is the area that they surveyed. So this is the height that was the sewer explosion complaint, that the air was washed out. Additionally, we have water flow that comes from the corner of Warren and Basin, which is right here. So this is all stream and then this is a stream. This project would remove about fifty-eight trees, existing trees. There were fourish power that are in the vicinity of the project to allow us to grade out the project and stabilize the stream bank. The project would be five hundred and sixty millimeter stream bank stabilization. In the plan, our P R P plan, Basin Road was contemplated at forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty by H R G at the other end. This project, based upon the length and the credit that the, that D E P has approved in the P R P, we're looking to approximate right now about sixty-four thousand pounds.
To be the word.
Yes. So that's the project what's going to be there. Still in preliminary design stage. It faces as far as what's going on with how, how's it going to be achieved. But this is where the project currently, so we'll have two legs of the stream we will restore and onto the banks. I did talk with Chris today about potential options to reduce the amount of grading. He's going to, he's going to research those as well. So this is currently in progress. But as of the length, as of today, the length of the, we'll give it sixty-four thousand. So if we add that back in, sixty-four thousand, we're going to, we have on the books on this chart, three hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirteen pounds of reduction. We're still forty-eight thousand pounds short. Now, earlier Marjorie asked about the street sweeping. Last year, we picked up two hundred and seventy-one thousand pounds of debris off of our roadway. So with the reduction that D E P gives us, we can, we can, uh, that counts as twenty-five thousand pounds towards our annual reduction. Now, we won't know until June of twenty twenty-five how much weight it took, how much we picked up off the roads. Additionally.
So you, you expect it to be that different year to year? Or do you think there is definitely a very decline where you think?
I don't know. I know that twenty twenty-four was more than twenty twenty-three. And the simple reason was the weather was better and they could sweep more.
Yeah.
So it's weather dependent. Twenty twenty-three, we had less weight than we got off the roads in twenty twenty-four. That may be.
Was it proportionate to the miles driven, so is the?
No. There's no, I looked at it month to month. There was nothing. It's just, we had more time. We actually did street sweeping in November and December. Where in twenty twenty-three, we didn't sweep in November, December because of the weather. Once you start getting your winter precipitation, you can't sweep. So it's dry. So that was the difference. So we swept July, August, September, October, November, December, and then we started in April this year. So January, February, March, we did not sweep at all. The additional program that's new, it's not in this report because it doesn't count for, it's my H D M I unplugged, was the back truck. So for the reporting year that we moved sixty-six thousand, three hundred and forty pounds of debris from our pipes. That is something that we can count in the M S four. We cannot necessarily count that we'll get that much every year.
A pound for a pound.
That is a pound for a pound reduction. But I don't know if we can get sixty-six thousand pounds every year. Because how many years have those pipes been fully cleaned?
Well, a lot of that was from the airless because we did not clean out a bit while in the C N P. It was all concrete pipe and the airless. It was mainly airless if you want that part.
So if that goes year over year and sweeping goes year over year, we may be able to have enough with what's on.
Well, you're more than the forty-eight thousand debt, is that right?
But that also is still, the, the big buck item is a hundred and ninety-eight thousand pounds in the West Town Road Stream Restoration Project, which is the stream along the surface of the building. Because of the length of that stream. If that project falls through, we're half of what.
Where's the basin at?
The basin is fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty. So the basin is going to come up to maybe twenty. So we gain some extra in there. But we still need to get, we still, if that West Town Road Stream Bank does not go, we lose half of it. There is. This one right here, this is the one that we need. This is the big, big project. If we don't get that hundred and ninety-eight thousand pounds, we're going to be short by half of our allocation. The other.
This is, oh, this is the second cycle of the permit?
Yes. So we have five years on this, on this yet.
To achieve the three hundred, whatever.
Three hundred, four, which is retrieve three hundred and ninety thousand pounds. So.
What's the consequences for not meeting that goal?
Well, what we have to do then is we have to revise our P R P to add something, add other projects into it. Which is to the last piece of what I want to discuss tonight, which is Goose Creek. H R G has estimated a hundred and three thousand, five hundred pounds based on the length of the stream for stream restoration. We cannot achieve stream restoration. However, Chris and I met with Michael Dunn from the Goose Creek Alliance. I would say it was August.
Yeah, it was around that.
Yeah. And he emailed us back as of September twenty and says he may have a workaround, quote, workaround for the, for the wetlands. Will give us more information. That's all he said. So we don't know what that means until we see more detail what he has. If he has something that we may be able to use in that area of Goose Creek through the Goose Creek Alliance as a lead project, we may be able to get some benefit out of that project, which would either get to this number or be something that then we may not have to be as reliant on this number.
So that Goose Creek project is off, is updated because it's wetlands back there?
There's wetlands all over the place out there. He said he may have a workaround. That was his exact term. I may have a workaround, more details to follow up.
But he's not an engineer. He's not a.
He's a, he's a wetland, he's a.
He's not an M S four store, what a civil engineer, as far as I recall.
I don't know what I would call him.
Oh, yeah, but he said they may have a workaround through the Alliance stuff. Well, until I get more information, I don't know what to do.
Sixty thousand pounds from back truck from one year. Five-year permit, five times sixty thousand is three hundred thousand pounds. Yeah.
Right, but it's, but they don't look at the pounds as a cumulative amount.
What do you mean, what?
You, you get the, the sixty thousand of which you're getting, say you're achieving.
Well, this is probably an app per year, right?
Right, right. It's an annual reduction. Pounds per year. So sixty thousand per year is.
If you say you can do that routinely, you'd be getting out of three thirty.
Right. But, but we only have one year of data. I want to see two or three years of data to see if it's going to be equal or what's going to do. Same thing with the street sweeping. I only have two year of data.
But how did the, the back truck cost us what? Seventy, eighty, a hundred thousand?
Something like that. Yeah. We budgeted a hundred and fifty, we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand and I don't think Marcus spent that.
Yeah, it's probably a hundred.
Yeah. So it's a, it's a, we've seen good results in year one. I want to give it three or four years to see.
And we did it, this is second, we've done.
We have one year that we dumped in June. It was last year to this year was, it's the tipping, we tipped June thirty. June thirty, we dumped so we knew what the exact total was at the end of the calendar. So we're in year two right now.
Previous year, we did start till after June, right?
Right. Yeah. So we have, so our reporting year for M S four is July, July one to June thirty. And then reports due at the end of September.
So back truck work, it was after June thirty, this is going to be the next.
Yes. So that was in this year's report. But our, our M S four does not speak to.
Is the report you submitted for the annual report, what do you say it was, how many pages?
About nine hundred.
Is it available on our website?
Um, it will be. It's not there yet.
It's not there yet.
Yes, please.
I mean, it should be under that store work section.
Any other announcements, Brian?
That's all I have tonight. Any questions?
Brian?
Um, it was just what, following up with Ms. Delancey. So what's the consequence of not meeting your goals other than you have to plan for?
There was one township I know in Langley County that was audited by the E P A. They paid almost four hundred thousand dollars in fines.
Okay, so the E P A fines is that.
Because this comes from the E P, the E P A is the auditor that makes sure what they're saying and that is what they're doing. They were audited. They paid several hundred thousand dollars in fines on top of what they had to do to retrofit.
I was going to say, if it's cheaper than a retrofit, then it's.
Where the fines were also on top of compliance. I sat through a presentation of peace out last year about it. And the engineer who was there said, don't get, don't, don't do what we did. It's basically it.
Well, they could, they could impose impressions per day too, on top of that, until compliance is met. So.
I mean, it's, it's still a program that I would say is in safety relative to state regulations and P A D P. A lot of townships are struggling with how to comply with an M S four permit. We've done some things. We're struggling as well with projects. We certainly had a debate about it tonight. But it is a state requirement to comply with permits. The E P A have oversight to ensure compliance. So if you don't like it, go to the state, get the law changed.
Quick question. What is the T House over at Greystone? Is that that little, uh, building that's on?
The T House over at Greystone has been demolished and it's gone.
Okay. What's the little structure? Okay, what's the little structure on what lake?
Boat house.
Boat house.
That's the boat house. Is that the, or not?
That's going to be, that's part of the HOA, the HOA, that's one of the HOA property that gets, when that dam is done and the DEP releases that piece of property for the dam, and that in the lake, there's a property line, especially that that's getting dedicated to the HOA.
Just one comment, when I went to the DEP a couple of years ago, Norristown, sat and talked to the guy for about two and a half hours, he explained to me that the MS4 permit used to just be the six minimum control measures. And everybody, every township municipality, little more, didn't do the minimum. So all these pollution production plans were in response to nobody doing those six minimum control measures. So they just want to see townships doing something. And I, I would like to suggest that those six minimum control measures, are we really focusing on those six measures? And if we're able to show that we're doing those minimum measures, would the DDP kind of say, "We see that you're trying, you're attempting, you've done these, you know, this stream bank, this-"
The minimum control measures don't have anything to do with these projects. I, I get what you're saying, and I understand, but we're all so different than a lot of municipalities in Pennsylvania, because we have a actual TMPL, which is the Total Maximum Valued Load, we have a waste allocation we're allowed to release from our property, from the township, because we drain to Christina River, which goes to the Chesapeake. So we have a waste load allocation that not every municipality has.
And one last comment, I did look up, who owns that Pine Valley Basin, and it was transferred to West Ocean Township ownership in 2019. So again, we just need to stay on top of this, if we're out there recruiting these basins to retrofit.
Yeah, it's a great point, Mike, we don't want them to deteriorate, I'm going to spend money on them. I don't, just to caution you, I don't know if a few weeds going in, it's really a problem or not, we'll have to find out. Because Carol inspected Iowa Wild, and they said it's functioning fine, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, I have a question for Brian.
Yes.
Back on Woodlands, the outstanding issues with the dam.
They, my understanding is the DEP has been dragging their feet for over a year.
So my question is, let's say this continues the way it is, is, is resolution of what is needed to fix that dam part of what we need in place before we accept, accept the open space? Is it part of the, sort of documents, conditional use requirements, everything else?
The, so the dams themselves, the two private dams are not part of any of the performance bond, because they're not dedicated to proof.
Do they, if a failure to correct issues with it, would it ultimately impact our open space if there was some kind of failure of the dam?
It would impact our dam, to the point where our dam would probably pond and release water. But it won't impact the river basin more than a horrible storm.
Okay.
It would just impact the-
It's a score.
Could we get credit for the work on that?
Not for the dams, but we may be able to get credit for the basins once they're finally as-built and complete, we may be able to. Tridiff Township has been, is the guinea pig, and I wanted to talk during today, but it seems they all see tomorrow. They've been tracking BNP's as they've installed under the current ordinance, and there's a whole protocol of maintenance, inspection, all that. So these would be the first ones that may qualify under the protocol, that we may be able to get some credit for the basins. The problem we have with that is the area that drains them is not very large, so your reduction of pollution is based upon the drainage area to the basin. So the basin at Basin Road is 15 acres, and we got 15,000. The basin at, I'm saying, Idlewild was 5,000 pounds. I don't know how much that drainage area is. Pine Valley was 5,000 pounds of reduction. So I don't know how big. The engineer told me they're averaging about six to, about three to 4,000 pounds a year they'll get with all the stormwater, BNP's are being stolen, Tridiff gets maybe three, two or three thousand pounds a year added to their, their MS4. So it's not, they're, the impact is much greater for stream bank, you get 100, our PRP is approved at 115 pounds per lineal foot of stream bank. That's a lot of sediment that they say you remove consistently by restoring those stream banks and vegetating.
The models say that, but in actuality-
That's, but that's what DEP has approved in our PRP, so if they've approved it in the PRP, that's, that's where these numbers come from. I, I didn't run the models, they're not my models, they're DEP approved models, and DEP has approved the numbers, and that's the important part for this.
I understand that an absolute number, that's very precise from the model, but I know you've seen stream banks get eroded, there is a lot of sediment that gets washed down into rivers and everything from that. Look at North Hills, that property, is what exactly you can see yourself where it's just erosion of the stormwaters, it's created a massive gully on a private property. It's just, stream banks have problems when they get these kind of floods, water floods that we see today. Anyway.
Anything else, Brian?
That's all I have.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, SD.
Brian, are the trails over at Greystone going to be paved at some point?
Currently, the trails are paved where they're required to be paved, and they're gravel where they're required to be gravel. There's areas of the trail where they had issues establishing the gravel, so they chipped seal them, which is the tar and chip or chip seal, they chip sealed the trails, so it's not asphalt, but it's not gravel or chip sealed. But right now, the trails are built as per the approved plan.
We've discussed in the future, looking at the areas where there's significant washout and paving those areas, so that we're not constantly replacing stone, I think, for that nature.
And the stone they use is not, not a two-modified.
Yes, the stone they used on the plan is number two-modified. It's two A modified that they put down. That's what, that's what the plan's called for, the trail is two A modified.
Where are not-
It's, it's, the equipment putting in is smaller, so the rollers aren't as big, but it was two A modified. I've been through there in the last couple of weeks, and there's a very, the, the trails have held up, but did not wash. They've, they've addressed all the washout concerns I had in the first punch list, and I went to the second one, there were, there was no washout issues that I saw.
This is the future, township, you know, with the paving, a lot of those trails, because they're making much more walkable, strollers, you know, all kinds of stuff.
Some of the trails is going to be about a million dollars to pay.
And another million dollars, there we go, our reserve, that's what we needed for.
Good, we got plenty in the reserve.
That's right, there we go, they're already spending it. Okay, let's move on to item number 17, which is zoning officers' announcements. Shelby, please.
I have nothing additional to add further than what's been presented and discussed tonight, but I can answer any questions that may come.
Any questions from the board first?
So there's a preliminary application potentially for zoning grants at 8/25, if they all comply?
Not a variance, just a verification request.
Okay, that's what I was, you signed it, so it did. I said variance, but it did seem to be a variance. All right, thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions?
Just a quick question, on the rental program, you're talking about, take a look at the rental program and the streamlined and all that, and to approve, or you can include ways to determine which rentals are for students and all that?
Yeah, we're in a very preliminary stage of discussion. We had that internally, and we're at a meeting with legal, but yeah, the, my goal is to differentiate between student housing rentals versus more long-term rentals versus short-term rentals, actually. So kind of like a three-tiered program, almost.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, any questions from the public, or Shelby? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to number 18, which is approval of board supervision meeting minutes of September 17, 2024. Anybody have any comments relative on the board?
I'm going to do a children's question.
Okay, second?
You know, I'm abstained, so it's unprecedented, I believe.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any public comments relative to the meeting minutes? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Any opposition? Hearing none, no further discussion, motion passes 3-0. Okay, let's move on to number 19, which is treasurer's report. Dated September 30th, 2024, for the general fund, the sewer fund, the waste recycling fund, and the capital reserve fund, and the bills to be paid, including, including all of that. Is there any discussion regarding the bills from the board?
I have one. Number 8293, PSET PA State Association Boot Camp Session for Dean Warren.
That was what we attended earlier this year. We just got the bill.
Oh, got you, thank you.
Okay, any other questions regarding the treasurer's report, or any of the funds to be paid so far? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Well, second.
Any further discussion? Any public comments regarding the bills or invoices to be paid? Okay, let's vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, no further discussion, motion passes 4-0. The next thing I'll need, Jim, is to adjourn and take a vote. Anybody want to make a motion? Second?
Public comment? I don't want to steal what I have.
There'll be, no further discussion, the motion adjourned from the meeting, pass a vote of 4-0. Okay, thank you everybody for coming, and for your comments, and your part, I appreciate it. Have a nice night, for what's left of it.